Items that we were tasked with providing is, there's been a little bit of conversation in town about if the possibility was to turn this back to natural grass field. So what we had found for the same scope of work to convert the turf to natural grass, it's a more expensive effort and from a use standpoint, you're only able to use the field about a third of the time that you can with synthetic turf field. That's completely based on the amount of maintenance and use. You can put on a natural grass field without overtaxing it and having the field look like it did prior to synthetic turf field being put in. The picture on the far right, that's an image of the field in 2007 that your athletic director provided me with for information. I think at this point, I'll ask Marie to come up and she has a short presentation related to the chrome rubber.
And then how do I just give it the next one? Hi, I'm Marie Ruderman and I work for Environmental Solutions. I'm a toxicologist and a risk assessor. I've been a toxicologist for 25 years in the field of public health and toxicology.
Apologies, we're max face though.
So I'm here to address any concerns you might have about the potential health risks of chrome rubber, which is the infill that's used in synthetic turf fields. This is EPA's statement, that's from their website. There's been some concerns raised by the public. However, what's underlined is limited studies have not shown an elevated health risk from playing on the fields with chrome rubber. The reason that EPA has not come out with a definitive statement yet is because they are still doing some studies to determine, you know, you know, come to that definitive statement. They actually did come out with a statement indicating that there was no health risks, no elevated health risks from playing on synthetic turf fields with chrome rubber. I think it was in 2016 that they came out with the statement and, you know, various people pointed out that, well, they didn't, you know, they didn't look at every single aspect of, you know, the potential for health risks and so they pulled that back and are doing more studies. However, there is a growing body of evidence out there that there is no potential health risk from playing on chrome rubber fields. So chrome rubber has actually changed a bit from when it was first used in the 1980s and 1990s. Chrome rubber now has to meet the metals content for, that's the ASTM standard for F3188-66, which is the standard for safety in toys. And it also has to meet similar standards in the European Union. So the content of metals is, you know, tested in chrome rubber and it has to meet these standards. Particle size has also changed. There were some studies that showed that the much smaller particle size of chrome rubber had the potential to leach out some, you know, pHs and some very low concentrations of metals. And so the new chrome rubber that is being used in synthetic turf fields is sieved to take out those smaller particles. It makes it much less likely to inhale any of the dust, you know, because the dust is not there anymore, the really small particles. And also it goes through a triple washing process so that, you know, those smaller particles are not inhaled like much earlier versions of the chrome rubber. So when you think about the potential toxicity of chrome rubber or any product, you have to think about what's your exposure, right? So risk or potential health risk is equivalent to your exposure times the toxicity of that particular compound that you get exposed to. And the exposure is also tied in with the bioavailability of that chemical, the metal, whatever is, you know, in the product, right? So with chrome rubber, the, there are low levels of metals in chrome rubber. There's low levels of pHs, which are poly-succinic aromatic hydrocarbons. And that's, you know, that's part of rubber. They are in the chrome rubber, but they're in the matrix of, you know, of the product itself. It doesn't come unbound and, you know, it's not bioavailable. So when I was, I've gone through all the studies and I've, you know, looked at the various ones that are peer reviewed. We sent a memo this morning that had actually a summarization of a bunch of the various studies that I've looked at. But how, you know, how else can we evaluate, you know, what's in the chrome rubber? So what I did was I actually took chrome rubber and I sent it to the labs. I had five samples of chrome rubber that I sent to Alpha Lab and we analyzed the chrome rubber for metals, pHs, and SVOCs and VOCs to see what kind of, what would come out during extraction. And extraction will give you much more of a concentration of, you know, the pHs or metals or what's actually in the chrome rubber than if it were to naturally leach from the field, you know, out in the field. Because when you send it to the lab, they use acid, you know, pretty heavy duty acids to pull those chemicals out of the chrome rubber. And so, and then what I did was I took those data. I used the maximum concentration of what was from those five samples and I looked at it a number of different ways and I'll go through the different ways that I looked at it. I compared to applicable standards. And then I ran a risk assessment, which is a way to evaluate the chemicals in a way that is extremely conservative. Essentially, I assume that a child of a certain weight and, you know, and a certain age will be exposed to the chemicals for three days a week, you know, actually I'll go through, I'll go through all the different things that I did. But so what I did was I did a risk assessment assuming the child would ingest the particles, assuming they would have dermal contact with the particles. And I also assumed that they had the potential to inhale the particles as if it was soil and of course, because chrome rubber is actually a larger particle than soil, you know, that's an extremely conservative assumption. Okay, so let's go through what I did. Okay, so here we have the maximum concentrations of metals that I found in the five samples that I analyzed. And I have compared, I have been comparing them here to the ASTM standard for safety in toys and also the European Union's standard for safety in toys. As you can see, you know, for all of the metals that have a standard, they all pass. Then the other thing that I did was I compared to background concentrations in soil. Massachusetts DEP has looked at soil, natural soil, as well as urban soils and they have determined what are a background concentration in natural soils and in urban soils. A lot of times people will say, oh, but there's lead in the synthetic turf field or there's lead in the chrome rubber. There are very low levels here of lead. And if you look in the literature, you'll find concentrations of lead in, you know, up to about 100 parts per million in chrome rubber. But what I think people don't really understand is that soil itself, natural native soil also has lead in it. At, you know, the 90th percentile background concentration of lead is actually 100 milligram per kilogram, which is about as high as I've seen any of the chrome rubber, you know. It's, it's not, you know, and in fact, a lot of times the chrome rubber is much less like the highest concentration of lead that I saw in the five samples that I did were, that I analyzed was 26, 26 parts per million. And in urban areas, the concentrations of lead are much higher than what you would even, what you'd see in synthetic turf fields. A lot of, I actually, one of my clients does a lot of redevelopment of public parks and we are always finding much higher levels of lead that, you know, in the thousands of part per million. So, you know, hopefully this alleviates some of the anxiety when people see, you know, that there is a lead concentration just because there is lead in the synthetic turf, in the chrome rubber. These concentrations are below a level that are considered a health risk, well below. Okay, so then I took the data, those maximum concentrations that I found. There were relatively low levels of metals and there were some relatively low levels of pHs as well. And pHs can be, you know, some of them are carcinogens. So there were a few carcinogens that I did, you know, extract out of the chrome rubber, but they were at extremely low concentrations. And what I did was I ran it through a human health risk assessment. I assumed a residential receptor. Essentially, you know, I, I used even more conservative assumptions than what you would usually use for like somebody who's playing on a park. What I did was I assumed a resident was living with this chrome rubber in their yard. And I, the residential receptor is a 30-year exposure. And when I did this risk evaluation, there was, the risks were acceptable and there was no, no significant risk associated with the concentrations that I pulled out through extraction. These are some of the assumptions that I used. I used the maximum concentrations of what I had the lab analysis from. And so I had a subchronic exposure, which is essentially a young child. It's a one-year-old child and I assume that they were exposed to the chrome rubber two days per week for 30 weeks by dermal contact, incidental ingestion, and inhalation. And incidentally, there's two ways that you can think about inhalation. The one way is things can volatilize and get into the air. You don't necessarily see them. But with the chrome rubber, there was nothing that was, that would volatilize in the air. Everything that was, the VOCs, we did the VOC analysis. It was all ND in all five samples. The only thing that we found in the samples were very low levels of metals and very low levels of pHs. And so the analysis that I did for the inhalation was more of a fugitive dust type of analysis where they might, you know, kind of get it into their, you know, nasal passage and like there's a whole thing. There's a whole exposure pathway that the model goes through where, you know, they have to cough it up and, but I won't go into that. But that's, that's the fugitive dust scenario. So I essentially did the calculation three different ways. I did it first, the subchronic exposure for the very young child. And then I did a chronic exposure for a child one through seven years of age. And then I did the lifetime exposure, which is like, it's to protect for carcinogenic exposures. Incidentally, the carcinogenic exposures were de minimis. There, the concentrations of the few carcinogens that did come out through extraction were extremely low and, you know, there was no, essentially de minimis levels of carcinogens. And so the other, some of the other assumptions that I use in this, in this risk assessment are, I assume that the child is eating 100 milligram per kilogram of chrome rubber on each day of exposure. I assume that the chrome rubber sticks to their face, forearms, hands, lower legs, and feet. Which, you know, chrome rubber, when you are playing in it, you know, my son is a soccer player, it kind of does get everywhere, but it comes off right away. This is a mud scenario. This is assuming that it sticks to the skin for a 12-hour period. And then the fugitive dust scenario, I assume that they would be exposed to it for eight hours a day on each day of exposure. And then essentially, this assumes, you know, this risk assessment assumed that the chrome rubber was ingested like soil, which is, and adhered to the skin like soil, which is, that's just really conservative assumptions. Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
So I think we'll do, have school company members go back and ask their questions and then we'll order after everyone else.
Do you stay wherever you're comfortable with?
Yes, stay.
Thank you very much, both your presentations.
Okay. We'd like to start with questions.
Well, I have a quick question and I really hope you don't take offense. But I just wondered exactly who employs you?
I'm self-employed.
You're self-employed?
Yes, I have, I have my own business for 12 years.
So what is the range of businesses or entities or whatever that, that employ you?
So I work for a lot of smaller environmental firms. I do hazardous waste assessment. I do everything from, you know, big industrial firms to residential spills and that sort of thing. I also work for Clean Water. I have a couple of towns that I do clean water work for. And I also have an interest in synthetic turf fields, partially because I was worried about it initially because my son plays on synthetic turf fields probably about two or three times a week. So, you know, and I'm a toxicologist, so I reviewed all the, all the data. And one of my clients also installs synthetic turf fields. So, you know, I started working with them and now I'm kind of branched out to other companies that, that install synthetic turf fields just to understand, let, help, try to help people understand what the potential risks are.
So I have a follow-up, which is, it looks like you're, you know, clearly your position is, you have a comfort level with this. But do you ever compare and contrast this, a chrome rubber field with, for example, the more, the newer, more natural products that are out there in terms of what's more safe and what's not? I, I just, you know, it feels pretty strongly that you're comfortable with this, but have you ever advocated in the other way?
Yeah, absolutely. I think certain towns are just extremely risk averse. You know, there is a growing body of evidence that, you know, that chrome rubber does not cause health effects. But there are towns, and in fact, the city of Somerville, I'm working on a project with them right now and we're not even, we're not even using chrome rubber because we know the city of Somerville, people just don't want it. And so we're talking about cork nut and other, you know, there's sand, there's a whole bunch of other different products.
And so why wouldn't you ever present to a community this column A and column B?
Oh, we do.
Okay, because I don't feel like that's what we've gotten here today.
So do you, but do you, are there risks with the more natural fill too that you?
So how long with more natural fill is that there's not enough studies yet, right? Chrome rubber has really been studied. I mean, you know, people say, oh, well, the EPA hasn't come out with their definitive statement yet. They did and, you know, people poke holes in it and said, well, now you get to study this and study that. There is a huge body of evidence showing that chrome rubber is safe. But there's a lot of stuff on the internet, people get scared. In fact, what you, the couple of articles that you sent to me today, or yesterday, that I looked at, if you kind of dissect it, you know, some, in one of the, the articles that you sent me today, I was, I was, you know, just going through it and looking at it. They essentially said, well, there's lead in, in chrome rubber and, but if you look at the concentration, it was right at 100, it was 110. That's, that's a background concentration of lead in soil, right? So, and it's below, you know, it's below Massachusetts standards. In the article, they said it's above New York standards. Well, I went and looked up New York standards and the standard that they used in that article was not a health-based standard. That was a, their background number for lead. And the actual standard for lead in New York state is 400 parts per million. In Massachusetts, 400 parts per million. So, you know, there's some misrepresentation in some of these studies. And I've been looking at them with a very critical eye, you know. There, there are, you know, potential issues with synthetic turf field and chrome rubber. It gets hot.
Oh, is the other thing we're talking about?
Right.
The amount of the heat.
It's a safety, you know, that is a safety issue. But you can use water to cool them down. And, you know, and I've seen several synthetic turf fields with a water system installed so that when it does get above a certain temperature, they spray out, spray them off.
What's the, and you might not know this, maybe you would know this. What's the cost comparison, the synthetic chrome rubber versus like the newer?
The new, yes.
And then my next question, while he's looking and maybe, I'm not sure, David, if you would know this. What CPA, so what exactly component is CPA going to cover for this? So if, if we moved, for example, away from the chrome rubber towards a more natural component, is any of that cost covered by CPA? Do you know what CPA funds are exactly going to cover?
I want to say it's the drainage, it's a lot, 100%.
It's the turf system itself. So CPA cannot cover the cost of the carpet and infill as one. So if you have sand or rubber, what that cost is CPA can't cover that. If we went to an alternative infill, which all of them have premium costs, they could not carry the cost for that as well.
I don't cover.
So that would have to come from a different function.
So the infill regardless of where it comes from has to not be covered under CPA.
Correct.
So anything from the infill up CPA cannot cover.
With the carpet, correct, yep.
Right?
But like the tracks or the sand or ball dang, those are certainly under CPA.
Okay.
So this last slide that we've prepared, there are fuel-turned infills that we've looked at. We talked to the smaller working group early on. This freedom that we're showing here right now, one on the left is coated rubber. So essentially it's the same chrome rubber that we're talking about that you have in your field, but there's a small coating that you put on top of that. Generally, the premium for that is about $1.30 a square foot. So I think the premium on top of that would be about $100,000 for the project. The slide in the middle, TPE and EPDM, again, those are natural virgin rubber products that are developed for the infill. Those have some more significant premiums. They're between 90 and around $245,000 for those infills. Both these infills have good performance. Some of the issues we have with TP and EPDM is you don't fit good materials. There is some melting and some performance issues you run into. So each of these have some pros and cons as well. And then the one on the far right, the natural organic infill that Marie had mentioned, again, those have a premium as well. And then often we incorporate irrigation systems into those fields because they do need a level of moisture in order to not break down. The organics will break down over time. So where a synthetic turf field with chrome rubber may be one of the first two alternative infills, you fill it, you lose a little bit of infill over time, but you know, eight, 10 years down the road, you probably talk to us to replace. The organic infills, you may be replacing every two to three years, not fully, but that, that material is breaking down, you need to include that in your budget. So each of the alternative infills, they have premiums, but there are some maintenance concerns specifically related to the organics.
And the organic are the ones that I was talking about? The newer products that are out there in the market now, is that what?
Organics have been around for a little bit. Again, in 2014, when the, everything came out, these became a little more prevalent in the market. Before that, you know, there were still these alternative infills, but within the last five or so years, some of these products come into the market and as the new cycle slowed down in towns and when this policy has become a little more educated, they made decisions one way or the other whether to use these or not. We did speak with a number of turf vendors and looked at our designs we've done. I'd say about 15 to 20% of the fields over the last five years have had alternative infills. So in the range of about 80% of those fields by number of turf vendors and then projects we've worked on, they're still doing chrome rubber. And again, from our standpoint, we have no preference versus chrome rubber or these alternative infills. Each one have different performance characteristics and it depends on who the, who the client is and what they want. But just, it's happened that that, that's what general percentages are.
And what's the maintenance for the chrome rubber versus your organic in terms of manpower? And what's the maintenance for the chrome rubber versus your organic in terms of manpower and cost?
You know, generally, the typical maintenance, about every four to six weeks, depending on use, you're going to have to groom the field a little bit, basically fluffing up the infill, making sure it's not decompacting, and then cleaning out with a piece of groomer and a sweeper, pulling out body pins, hair elastics, things like that that just get to the field. The organics, like I know, every two or three years, probably go top rust with more infill. The other infills, though, there's not much more maintenance than just the four to six weeks, keeping on top of that through the life of your synthetic turf field.
So Becky.
No, go ahead. One concern I had is that I did not realize that you were going to reuse the rubber that's there now. So my first thought was, that's really old rubber, pretty old, and it could be much more degraded than something that was a newer product. Is that literal, I mean, that's not what you had tested, right? You had just a random sample of chrome rubber tested.
Yeah.
So.
You knew.
Yeah. Right. So, but my concern was that the, you know, if, I didn't realize you were going to reuse what's there, as I said, I'm repeating myself, but that really kind of raised a red flag for me because everything degrades over time, and rubber certainly degrades over time. And you would think a degrading process would add to the sort of availability of various metals and, you know, other things that we're concerned about.
John can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we had that material tested before by the lab that came and took samples of the infill.
Of our material?
Yeah, had it tested. And it wasn't tested for what was coming out, it was tested just for its general resilience and what kind of condition it was in.
Well, we heard about that, and we knew that it was tested, and actually, what we were told is that the reason this whole process has to occur is because there is considerable wear and tear and, you know, degrading.
Yeah, I think it's gorgeous that people take it home in their fleets and they file it, so it gets taken inside, and now it's on the side of the field, so we have to augment that a little bit. Plus, the top bit of the infill, we're actually going to take away and remove because that's got other stuff in the air and fibers from the wood and fleets, I think. So we'll get rid of that. It's really the stuff that occurs at the bottom that we're going to reuse. And again, we had that tested, the testing lab said this is an infill that we think you can reuse, you shouldn't have any issue with using this. We're going to have to augment it a little bit to fill in the thing, you know, in the product. And I think we also, we think about what the system is that's out there now. The depth of infill is thicker than the depth of infill that in the system we're going to put in because we've used that pad to add the resilience instead of the additional chrome. So we're going to add a little bit too. And I think to summarize what she said is that what's in that rubber, whether it's broken down or not, isn't bioavailable. Were it bioavailable, it still doesn't occur at concentrations that would elevate the health risk. So when she talked about extracting those things and putting it through all these tests and what is the elevated, what did the risk assessment tell us? She created a scenario that doesn't exist, right? So the stuff is in there in really small concentrations, it's not available to the body. But if you were to do things to make it available to the body, like extract it with acid, which isn't going to happen, even at those levels, it's not something that would elevate the health risk.
Now, didn't you say the rubber that was used a long time ago is different than the rubber that is used now, with the chemical composition a little bit?
Right. It's not the chemical composition that's changed, it's the particle size.
Okay.
They've really soaked out the smallest particles and, you know, so the chrome rubber that you see is actually a lot more uniform than it used to be. And it's also like a larger size, so it's.
So with our old infill, is that the way it used to be or the way it is now with the larger particles?
I'm going to say no because that's a field turf system, which processes the rubber in a different way than other manufacturers were doing it at that point. I don't want to get way into the weeds of how that stuff is done. There's two ways to process chrome. One of it is to crown it at room temperature, vulcanian, and then there's cryogenic, which is they take the rubber and smash it. That is smash passenger tires and based on the nature of that field, you're not talking about a whole.
Okay. Other questions?
So, I think one of the things that, and I know that there is no changing this, but whenever you read things and they say there's no significant health risks, my alarm bells go off because I'm wondering, okay, so.
That is an EPA and EPA, that is an agency evaluation, that's the agency language, or this is not a health risk? That, I mean, no significant risk is below a level that they consider to cause a health risk. So, you know, how I was talking about, you know, there were some carcinogens, you know, I think there were two PAHs that were carcinogenic that I, you know, got from pulling out, doing the extraction of those samples. So what you do is you do this evaluation. There's many very conservative exposure assumptions that are kind of built into the, into my risk assessment, right? It's pretty unlikely that somebody is being exposed at these levels that I'm talking about, right? So there's some uncertainty there, right? You're essentially assuming the person's getting exposed to this much, and they're really probably getting exposed more like here, right? So there's all these assumptions kind of built in. And then, once you do that characterization, you come up with a number, well, what does this number mean, right? So Massachusetts DEP has set a number for when you do this calculation, a health risk of one or less is acceptable. It's no significant risk, okay? That's for non-cancer. And then for cancer, it's one even the minus, one even the minus five or below is no significant risk. And, you know, what I calculated is, I think it was like one even the minus seven or something like that, so it was well below what's acceptable.
So I have a really pedestrian question, which is, can you give a comparison, when you say no significant health risk here, can you give us a comparison of something that people do every day that carries the same risk in terms of chemical exposure or?
That carries the same risk.
No, that no significant risk. Because I think for some people, if you can compare it to something that we all do all the time and don't think twice about.
Right.
You can take it down.
Yeah.
It's hard to say the same, but like eating an ever.
Well, right, so there's PAHs. Well, or eating a steak that is on the grill.
Okay.
There's actually probably more PAHs that are coming off your steak on the grill, especially carcinogenic ones, because you're more likely to get carcinogenic PAHs when you grill over and over in fire. And, you know, that is actually probably a little bit higher risk, eating a steak, because they get PAHs when you grill it.
So I have, I guess, questions for both of you. Of the companies that you've worked with that have used an organic infill, have you found any, I know it's new, but over the time that they've had it, have you found any problems? Have you found that they were happy with it?
So I will tell you that Portsmouth, New Hampshire, installed a corknut field. And because of the location, it was right on the water, all of the corknut flew away and they had to get a new infill. And they, I actually, I have to look up and see what they ended up with, but they were not pleased at all with the corknut. My son plays on a corknut field in Marlborough. You know, they're around, but.
Yeah, we've done a number. We did the first one in Massachusetts at Shady Hill about 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Probably a dozen or so.
Yeah.
In the right situation, it's a great infill, it performs terrific. In the wrong situation, it's a terrible infill.
So what's a wrong situation?
A wrong situation is a place where you're not maintaining it diligently, where you don't have somebody who's jobbed it to take care of that field on a daily basis.
Well, and also.
Not near the water.
Well, for Portsmouth was that, I think it really dried out and blew out, and they had the windmill after about a year.
Yeah, and I did read something about that that product tends to absorb moisture, like if it rains or something like that, it tends to be more absorbent.
That's okay. Again, they're tremendous infills in the right situation. I don't think that's the right situation. I also think when you look at it from the standpoint of, you already own the materials that you're going to put in there, why would you pay, again, why would you pay to throw out what you already have that was fine, to put in something that's not only more expensive than if you replace the rubber, but more expensive than even replacing old corknut and new corknut?
So other than that, why do you think this is the wrong situation for?
Because you don't have somebody who is specifically tasked with taking care of that field all the time. You need to have eyes on these fields all the time to make sure they're performing the right way. Because it is organic, it compresses, it gets really hard. So you're going to have a situation where the kids go up there, they're not going to like it because it's super, super hot.
Are there different types of organic materials that are used, or is it just the corknut?
They're all relative, yeah, they're all relatively similar, so it's either cork and coconut, some of it is just coconut, some of them have rice hulls in it, and there's a variety of walnut shells, there are a range of different things. There's a new product on the market that is basically ground up wood from a type of southern pine, which is interesting, but it's just on the market. I would never say, hey, let's do this, that makes great sense. So for us, this is not the right situation.
Okay.
John and I are working now on a professional training, professional soccer training. Makes tremendous sense for them because they have somebody with goutless to be out there, learning it, to be brushing it, to be doing all the things that you don't have somebody who's doing it. And I don't think we're going to hire a new person who's got this.
Everyone stayed for the budget presentation. Okay.
I don't think it's bad, but it's just not the right infill.
Any other question?
Yeah, hold on a second.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Well, with all due respect, I know that water can temporarily sort of mitigate the heat situation. That's been a concern of mine with the fields we have now. I mean, you certainly hear reports of incredibly high temperatures. And I know that our athletic director and the coaches are very sensitive to that and protect our kids, but still, it's a problem. How much would one of these systems that you talked about that would kind of regularly water the field?
No doubt about it, that is. If I were to look at chrome rubber fields, that's, the really one issue, one of the they've never got over is that they can get incredibly hot at certain times of the day when there's no cloud cover, it's hot, and the organic fields are significantly cooler than that. My speculation is that you've done a pretty good job of managing what's here for the last 10 years, and you continue to do a pretty good job of managing what's there for the next 10 years of this. So using a little bit of discretion, not putting kids out there at 12 o'clock when it's 90 degrees, 12 o'clock in the sky, you've got grass fields going to go to those. Definitely hudders, it's a way around that issue, but you just have to use discretion as to when you're actually.
And then one more question related to my first question about, you know, your own, who pays your salary? What labs do you select, and how do you select those labs that you use for the testing?
I use Alpha Labs in Westboro for my back testing. That was created about several years ago. There's a number of those labs around, but I use Alpha Labs because I've used them before.
So they have a particular expertise in, and your own sort of academic and experiential background, you said you've been in the field for 25 years.
Yes.
Toxicology. But I'll be honest, I don't really know what goes into sort of the educational process for a toxicologist.
So it's actually similar to a pharmacy degree. We study, you know, we study tap of physiology, and the toxicology, you know, my thesis was on fluorinated solvents and the toxicity. I actually did a couple of different, worked on it a couple of different ways, but it was, their toxicity through inhalation. And also, I did an aquatic lab with, at head minimum, daphne manina exposure to fluoridates. Essentially, I went to Northwestern University, and the program there is very based on the pharmacology of aquatic different drugs. It's essentially very much like a pharmacy degree, but we look at the toxicity of all of the chemicals rather than dispensing drugs.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, so I think what we're going to do, we have a microphone over there if anyone wants to go to it. We'll call on you. I'd appreciate if you could just stand up and say your name just so we can hear you. So we'll get started. Ms. Dar? You don't have, if you want to, but if you have a voice that projects.
This is actually a really quick question. Is it possible to consider recycling the chrome rubber as planned, but instead of adding more chrome rubber to add that top layer with a different organic material? That way you have the more organic stuff, like the surface, but you're not throwing out what is considered to be reusable material?
Yeah, the answer is I don't know. I've not done that. I don't know what is the result of doing. Of course, the result of that is probably their performance or a longevity perspective. The only thing I can see that may be helping us out is it doesn't negate the issue, which again, I don't think is an issue that has elevated that. Great question. I don't know the answer because it's not, it's a matter of.
Dr. Karah?
Can I ask a question about the coated rubber? That is obviously still chrome rubber, but it is coated. Is the reason it's coated, is it considered more safe in term of toxicity? Does it have any impact on the heat? What is the purpose of the coating, and what is the coating?
It doesn't, the coating is a urethane coating. It's basically encapsulation of the rubber, which is a response to people saying it was bad stuff. It's encapsulating stuff that's already encapsulated. In my eyes, there's no point in it, other than, other than the fact that it can be done in color. And so from an aesthetic perspective, if you have green rubber out there, it looks nicer than black rubber looks, but there's no other benefit to it.
It doesn't impact the heat at all? Thank you. Who's your next? Jenna Vailas? Am I saying your name right?
Hi. Yeah, Jenna Vailas. A couple of questions. I mean, well firstly, I'd like to say, I think we should be risk averse. I think that should be where we come from, the angle that we come from. You know, and I'm wondering, there are several towns in Massachusetts that haven't used chrome rubber. There are so many, there's even a very recent report that's come out, that talks about, you know, that how 60, 12% of the chemicals in it are known carcinogens. I'm wondering, you know, what heavy metals, what other heavy metals are in our infill that we're just thinking about reusing? Jax doesn't seem safe or prudent or smart. And I know it's more expensive to go a safer route, but I really think it's vital that we entertain the idea and perhaps, you know, we listen about the chrome rubber infill, to listen to, you know, I know there are several other companies that offer an organic alternative, to perhaps listen to them and to have a presentation from them to see. Because, you know, I don't know, not that I don't believe that it needs to be maintained slash replaced every two to three years. I mean, I don't know. How do we know that? And again, I don't mean to be accusatory, but I'm wondering, I'm still unclear how you're paid. You work with a turf company, so you're coming here on behalf of, or?
I don't work with.
I don't get it.
I'm an independent contractor.
Right.
I'm a toxicologist who works.
I understand that, and you work with turf companies?
No.
Oh, I thought you said that.
We're a design firm. You work as a design firm.
Yeah, they're a design firm.
Nobody here is, nobody here is a turf company.
Okay. All right. So design firm, and then you work with the design firm. Okay. And again, Jane Martin has said everything seems so pro-chrome rubber. And I'm wondering why we're so pro-chrome rubber, when there are so many studies and?
Yeah, we did, we did have a number of different turf vendors come in and meet with the subgroup to do this step way over these, these issues. And then just determined that reusing the existing ones.
Yeah, I wonder maybe as an ask to the school committee, or I don't know to whom I'd ask, but if we could have, you know, as a community, I don't know if anyone else was in the small subgroup. I wasn't, wasn't aware of that.
No, it wasn't. It was the procedure they went through to hire the design company and put a, put a presentation together for us with their recommendation. Now, of course, we could go back and say, we'd be interested in getting more information on X, Y, Z. Can you put a presentation together on that as well?
And is there still, I know it's probably time sensitive too.
It's time sensitive in that some of these funds are going to town meeting for a vote. So we'd like to, you know, know what, obviously be able to tell everyone what's going on before that. So, yeah. Go ahead, David.
I just wanted to say, I was part of the subcommittee, I guess. We also had Bill Matthews was part of that subcommittee, and Billy Casey from the DPW, who does a lot of the maintenance on the field, he was part of that subcommittee. I'm not sure if Wes was there or not, but anyways, I think the thought process towards the chrome rubber was the fact that you already have chrome rubber out there. In addition to probably 90%, if not 100% of the fields that we play on, as far as we have away games, they also have chrome rubber. So as these guys were saying, like 80% or so of the fields in Massachusetts have chrome rubber. So even if you don't go with chrome rubber here, you're going to play on chrome rubber somewhere else. So that's kind of what the thought process was.
Okay. Okay.
Hi, I'm Jessica Hubein, and I wanted to echo what Jen said. I have two kids in the middle school now, and I support them lacrosse. And they spend a lot of time on
the turf field. I'm very invested in getting them to this kind of field, like, you know, get it in standards for our athletes, so I know, I think you're trying to keep that progress, but I really would like to consider the organic alternative. I know, I looked up today, at least four other towns have recently done it, with Park Barrow, we mentioned your someplace, Andover, and I think it's worth considering. I, I'm.
That's not.
I actually contacted the superintendent's office of Andover, and they're going to get back to me some people to speak with.
And one of the things I would be curious to know is if all of those districts have actually hired someone to do what you recommend. That, for me, I have to be honest, that's a concern. When I know what the next conversation that we're having, the ability of this, of the district to absorb another staff person, not there.
I agree. I'd like to find out what feasibility is. Jen suggested perhaps have someone come in from my organic perspective, maybe give us a similar type of presentation. But I did just want to share one thing I rented in, it really stuck with me. This was by a woman, Dr. Liana Zuckerberg. She's the president of the National Center for Health Research, which is, I looked up, a nonpartisan, pretty reputable organization in the D.C. area. And she was testifying before the Maryland legislature where she lives, February 8, 2018. Maryland at that time was considered a law that there could be no state funding of artificial turf. And it's a long testimony. It won't be at all, but it spun during a couple of hair rounds, but sort of stopped. Not a deal was on the matter. Artificial turf is made from synthetic rubber, plastic, and other materials with known health risks. For example, the widely used material known as chrome rubber, or tire chrome, includes carcinogens as well as chemicals that disrupt our body's hormones. These are called endocrine disrupting chemicals, and studies show that they contribute to early puberty, obesity, and attention deficit disorder. Since breast cancer and several other cancers are fed by estrogen and other hormones, these materials can cause cancer in the long term. Some endocrine disrupting chemicals have been banned by federal law from toys and other products for young children. It does not make sense that chemicals banned from rubber duckies, teething toys, and other products used for a relatively short period of time by children are allowed in playing fields and playgrounds where children are exposed day after day, week after week, and year after year. The artificial turf industry will tell you that there was no clear evidence that their fields caused any child to develop cancer. That is true. But as an epidemiologist, I can also tell you that for decades, there was no clear evidence that smoking caused cancer, or that Agent Orange caused cancer. It takes many years to develop that evidence. And even then, it is usually impossible to prove that cancer that any individual has developed was specifically caused by smoking or any other one source of exposure. However, the weight of the evidence can be clear, even when the specific cause and effect can't be proven. There is clear evidence that the materials used in synthetic turf can cause cancer, skin irritation, contributed to obesity, and other health issues. So those are the concerns that we need to at least have the school committee, and we have a meeting of this here from the coconut alternative, and see if it is something that we could perhaps hear here instead.
Sure.
Tiffany Sears, I was just wondering, it sounds like it's already a known factor that the, the heat is an issue, since we're considering investing in like another long-term series with this material. Have they had any discussion of processes or policies to put in place to help avoid the issues that come with the heat?
In terms of like the clean.
Rules.
Right.
When you can and can't play on it. Or just like process of looking at the studies about what those rules maybe should be?
Yeah, I don't know if the high school has any of those guidelines in their athletic department.
We don't. Like in the summer, when we have the preseason workouts, they avoid heat of day. They avoid when their heat index is.
Right.
Bill certainly does a really good job of networking across the state to see what timeframe people are using and not using for the field.
It just sounded like it was, I, I, not to say that they have those rules to follow them, but it just sounds like then in spite of that, that there's still.
Certainly look into that. Talk to Mr. Matthews about something like that, yeah.
We haven't had problems here. There have been problems in other fields.
We're not on field.
Yeah.
Have.
We have, yeah, just to clarify the previous statement, we have not had any, I haven't had any reported issues. I don't know if you have.
What would, just, what would that be? Like, would a reported issue have to be that like it got to the school play levels in childhood?
No, I get, I get reports if a child splits their lip on the playground. No, I literally do. I'm not exaggerating. That's, that's our procedure. We get it.
If a child had heat stroke or had a heat-related illness on the field, I would get an emergency.
An accident report.
I would sign it. It would get to the superintendent. She would see it. I've not seen one of those.
So as earlier, that was what we're talking about, that it gets really hot, but?
In general, I think.
In the industry?
Yeah.
In the industry, right. It hasn't been a problem in Eastern East.
But I do have a follow-up question to that, which is, we rent those fields, we rent that turf out a fair amount, I believe. Do we have policies about if somebody wants to come in and rent it in the middle of a, you know, 90-degree day, we don't care. It's up to them?
Is anything in the building to use form?
I just wondered. I mean, obviously, that's not a risk we're assuming because, right.
Use it in.
Right.
Right.
Yes, Ms. Han?
Laurie Han, one last. So, so question for you. I'm not as concerned about the artificial turf in terms of personally, I mean, I think there are a lot unanswered questions I've been reading on that. But I did have a question about the organic, you saying it's not properly maintained, it can be harder. And so I'm more worried about like ACL injuries and things like that, where there are tears and concussions and whatnot. So if that's not properly maintained, is that actually more dangerous than you think of chrome rubber?
I don't, I sort of know that it's more dangerous, but if it does not get maintained for a long time, maybe you'll feel like you're walking on this. So the inclusion of the pad goes a long way towards helping with concussions, but as it relates to people slipping or getting their knee locked into it, that doesn't help with that. So when it does get hard, I would suspect that probably increase the number of, you can't say dependent to put up with, I would expect that. We've done a number of them. I said, I'm a fan of those systems in general, in places where it makes sense. When they're in great condition, they're great. But if they're not maintained, not every few weeks, like you have to do with rubber, but literally, you gotta, you put your eyes on it every day. Do something probably once or twice a week that requires time and equipment. If I thought that was going to happen here, I might think of it differently, but I'm not so sure. Most public places, we've not done it for public schools, as far as I know. It's always, it's private colleges, it's private schools that have the resources and where it makes sense. And we do put them in places that don't do it, and I don't think they're very good fields. Yeah.
Yes. Hi, Kathleen Genova. It sounds like your coconut solution is an all-the-time job that you would be talking about moving here, if it's only once or twice a week for a few hours that they have to do something. So that's.
I think, well, I don't know what the person who would be tasked with that does with the rest of their time, but it would be extra time for somebody who's not doing it.
I understand. Do you approximate the hours? Are we talking an average of five a week or 15?
I would say it's probably close to 6 to 12 hours a week of extra time. Basically, a couple of hours to just improve. You're walking around, you're taking readings on, taking built-up readings, or taking like readings to see how hard the field is to use time.
Does that include watering the field? Or does it, is there a mandatory irrigation system, or?
No, but it makes a lot of sense to have irrigation. That material can absorb moisture from the air to keep itself hydrated enough. But in our summer times, when we might go for three, four weeks without rain, it needs to have some added to. And you do have to add a certain amount to it so that it keeps a certain bulk to it, so that it performs correctly.
I actually, I'll read the follow-up. Can you educate us a little on zeofill, which hasn't been mentioned in the past?
Yeah, zeofill is a calcite clay material. It's basically a, I think it's a fire clay. Have never done. It's used in some places that, from us, we do this all over the country. We hear reports back from people who do this in other parts of the country, that it's not really a great zeofill, and it's super hard, very abrasive, and then it breaks down over time as well. So I, zeofill is not something.
And last question. Will you talk about recycling what you have and adding? What are you estimating the ratio of, is it going to be 50% what we have and 50% new?
Yeah, so there's about inch of infill out there now. So your original field probably had about an inch and three quarters infill. So, you know, a little more than half, or a little less than half the infill this year. On top of the pad, so we have an inch of infill that's existing now. On top of the pad, you need an inch and a half of infill. So we're going to add about 50% now of the mixture of sand and rubber. So ultimately, the final surface, we're at about 60% sand by weight and 40% fiber.
Andrew Franzim, I just have a question on the pad that goes underneath. How long, like what's the life expectancy of that pad? As far as staying porous and not.
I'm sorry, could you just state your name, please?
Andrew Franzim.
Thank you.
I'm just asking about the pad that goes underneath.
Sure.
The life expectancy of it.
Great question. And it's, the warranty is 24 years, 16 or whatever. So 16, which is two carpet cycles. I would suspect that that will, that will last longer than the carpet cycles. That's how long it goes. And it's also made out of a 50-degree polypropylene, which is completely recycled and back into what it was before. There's a lot of things that are recyclable, but not necessarily to the same level of whatever product that started it. This particular product, you can then bring back with it. So it's a company that will provide it to the general contractor who went for bid, will come, let's say, worst-case scenario, 16 years from now, it's a port anymore. They'll come and pick it up and recycle it. So you wouldn't have to deal with any of the issues of that. It's hard to pay.
Just one more question. Is there a way to test densities on that all the time?
Yeah, there is. There is, yeah.
David, you have?
Well, I was going to say something about the, what you had, if we were to go in that direction, as they were mentioning, you'd have the water. It's an additional maintenance cost that we have to add into right now. We really don't want to have field, so we go in that direction. That would be just add to us.
Okay. Anyone else have a question or a comment?
I have a comment.
Sure.
I did want to congratulate you for one thing that you mentioned about doing the extraction method. I actually did do a deep dive into a few articles about, you know, different ways of measuring toxicity. And one of the articles, I said that the extraction method is so extreme in terms of what is pulled out, that it's almost not really relevant because it's so extreme. So I was very reassured, actually, that you had said that you had used that particular method, because most testing doesn't necessarily use that method, which does show much higher levels.
Right. There's a lot of variability in what's out there in the studies. You know, some of them do use extraction, like acid extraction, which is what I had Alpha Lab do. Other ones, they, they have like a weak acid bath, and you know, there's all these different ways that they've tried to mimic what the human body would do, you know, or mimic what happens with rain, and, you know. But the reason that I went with the acid extraction was because I know that that'll, that's going to pull out, you know, the most.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I would just like to echo the comment that in the community, I'd like us to be risk averse as well. But it's clear that the subcommittee has done a lot of work trying to be price-sensitive. And I encourage the committee to have two proposals, so they can weigh one versus the other. What would be the additional upfront cost if we went with the organic approach? What is an ongoing estimate of the maintenance costs included? Is it a part-time additional person, which I know a bunch of people know a lot. But at least so we know what those numbers are.
Sure.
And whether the field rental fees can perhaps be dedicated toward that additional person. So you can compare the apples and the oranges, rather than just have the concept, one price to weigh against an undefined concept.
Sure.
And maybe the subcommittee had that already, but it hasn't been discussed in terms of the ultimate running rate.
So from here, what do you want to do? Want to get some more information?
Yes. Absolutely.
Okay. No, go ahead.
I'm not sure if what we now need to do is to go back to you, because you're, you're our designer, and say that we would like to have some more information on the more.
Organic alternatives.
Yeah.
I'll state one, and then I'll kind of turn it over to these guys. But one of the, kind of like going with this stuff, what you hear was to say, if you wanted to go and kind of compare prices.
Sure.
You guys correct me if I'm wrong. I think we could do what's called an add alt. So we could do an alternative bid. So we have the, the prime bid would be the chrome rubber. And then we can also get a bid on the organic. And then when the bids are in, we can bring them to the committee and show them what the bid was, or show like whatever the difference in price. Obviously, if we have to get a maintenance person for 12 hours, that's a whole separate discussion. But I'm trying to do these guys.
For me, it's not just the bid, though. It's, it's, I want a side-by-side comparison of kind of what's the, what's the routine maintenance that needs to be done? What's the estimated timeframe in terms of replacement? What's the expertise that's required in terms of maintaining it? I kind of, all of those parameters, I'd really like to be able, for us to look at, side by side, partially because I think it's important for us to be responsive to the concerns in the community.
Yeah, I think we can pull that together. I do want to be clear that we did have vendors that came in and talked to the subcommittee.
So maybe you have the information already.
If not in a format where I can give you an memo.
But, no, but.
But this committee did hear from the turf vendors who provided all the information and came to that conclusion. Wasn't as, this was not excluded from the discussion.
Thank you.
It was a part of those discussions.
Okay. So maybe we just now need to have that information.
That's fair. And to confirm what you said, we can provide a roll, and it's part of the bid, to see what it would cost to.
Okay.
That's not very good.
Thank you. Do you have a question, sir?
My name is Fred Murray. So I studied on those motion readings everywhere. And we looked first and foremost at what involved in the project 10 years ago, where the issues of safety was addressed and brought to you. And there were some concerns at that time which were addressed successfully. The charter to these folks, the Divitas Group, was to present a recommendation, first and foremost, on the safest system that we could provide. And secondarily, it was the most cost-effective. As soon as you go to the. As soon as you go to the community with two alternatives, with inferring that one is safer than the other, we've done a disservice to everybody. In other words, we've heard from the toxicologists tonight, we've heard from, you know, everybody. You can look at, you know, the hundreds of studies that are out there, that there's no link, proven link. And we took that from the experts to be the truth. We also know that there's other people besides us that were looking into it. And most recently, just a short list of Amherst College, Boston College, Boston University, MIT, Northeastern, Tufts, Stonehill, Bridgewater State, Wheaton College, all put in fields with chrome rubber. So from our perspective, to go to the community and say we want to spend $200,000 because we're not quite sure why, and there's no reason why, is, we didn't see that to be a sensible approach given the economic situation in town.
No, and I appreciate, we all appreciate all the work you did and with the recommendations you came up with. Obviously, a lot of thought and work went into it. But it's our responsibility to provide information to people if they're asking for it. And it's our responsibility to look at these alternatives.
Sure. I'm not suggesting we don't do that. I'm saying that we did initially, we were very cautious in fact that there was a safety issue out there. I think we did the due diligence that was required at the time to bring the best presentation by proposal forward.
No, it's clear you did a lot of work on this.
I'm not opposed to that. But I think to go through that, we have to essentially say that, you know, what this expert has told us tonight, we don't believe what we don't trust. I'm not in that camp.
I don't, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, I don't think that's what we're saying. I think it's the level of... So there's a level of uncertainty with any kind of product, because the tests only go so far out. And it's just whether you want to take that even de minimis risk or not, or whether there's just another product you feel more comfortable with, even if you don't have a scientific backing for that necessarily. And so we're just going to look at our options. We're going to get as much information as we can. And then based on the information we have and our budgetary constraints, what's realistic, we'll, you know, we can certainly have another meeting, and people can come ask more questions.
And I do think that there is another piece of this, which is, in order for this to be successful, we need the support of the community. You need people behind you saying, we are going to help make this happen. And in order to do that, we need to know that the community has bought in. And so I don't, from my perspective, I am not disputing anything that we have heard tonight. And I'm, I'll be honest, I came in thinking, oh, no. But now my comfort level has been increased quite a bit. But I think we owe it to our, to our community to get to that same point. Because you want, we all want them supporting us when we move forward. You're going to need the support because you're going to be fundraising. We're going to need support because we're going to need, you know, votes at town meeting. So I think for all of those reasons, I think it's also important to consider people's...
Yeah, sure. Don't misunderstand.
I know, I know.
This is not going to take long.
Exactly. We've already got it.
We probably have the numbers that we looked at some months ago. I would concur, you know, given everything I've seen over the last decade, that the notion that we got somebody who can take care of that field in the summer and 365 days a year, with the level of care that he's described, you know, that's, I think everyone knows that's not going to happen a lot. But we can make that, we can make that decision. I'll certainly, you know, work with these folks and get whatever you need, and we can take it.
Thank you.
I guess, yeah, it's kind of turning over to activities, but I think we got to look at schedules. I'm not sure exactly what you want to do, because we have town meeting coming up on the 20th, I believe. And we need, we're not going to go up the bid now, we're going to hold on and have it on the evening, then everybody kind of just starts backing up, so...
Yeah, I think, not to say it is early, but right now, we're in a bidding climate. We are contracted, starting to get locked up for work. The schedule we had proposed was to put the project out to bids, that we were able to go town meeting with a hard bid number rather than a budget number. See what it would cost. Also, from a scheduling standpoint, we wait until town meeting to get approval, and then put it out to bid. We risk not having the field done for the fall season.
And I just want to confirm, if it's not done for the fall season, that our judgment is, we should not be playing on that field for one more season. Is that correct? Has somebody said that? I mean, I know we've talked a lot about it, that it's at the end of its useful life. We've stretched its useful life.
Very aggressive maintenance between now and then, if you were to...
I think that's why we're here.
Okay, so why don't we, I can talk to Dr. Cabral, and we can figure out a date. What, yeah.
Good question.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Star. And my son, Blaine, I'm not field up there, so thank you very much. But I, is it fair to say that the synthetic, the crumb, or the crumb rubber, all that sweat and ooze and goo that come off flares and goes into that field, that, does it run off better, the crumb rubber, than, because I'm looking at the organic, and I'm thinking, that's going to absorb all that stuff, and it might be harder for that to run off. So the fact of just be part of, you know, I don't know if there's any study on it, or if it's fair to say, yes, all that stuff runs off the crumb rubber better than the organic maybe? That's...
There are, excuse me, there are studies that show that stuff and various bacteria does not survive on the chrome rubber. They compared it to like natural turf. I don't, there's really just not a lot of information on these new organic infills. So I didn't, I can't tell you, you know, if there's any kind of bacteria buildup or anything like that on the chrome rubber. But I do know that the chrome rubber, there's been studies that show that bacteria does not build up on chrome rubber, and it's significantly less than natural.
Okay, we'll do one more question. Jen, did you have a question?
Not a question, just that I know that there's someone from Green Play that is willing to come and give a presentation what their organic products have to offer.
We've worked with Dolan in the past week.
Awesome. I mean, I could just, that'd be great if we could, you know, maybe publicize it somewhat and get people to come in to hear alternatives.
Well, I'm going to push back a tiny bit, because we didn't have any turf companies come in here and give us a presentation.
Oh, no, no, no. I mean, I think we know the pros to chrome rubber. Price, because that's always the big one, isn't it? Maintenance, low maintenance. I mean, those are the big, those are the shiny objects that we grab at and say, this is great, let's do it. I just think it's important to make a well-informed decision as a committee.
I agree.
And I have some really strong and deep concerns with chrome rubber.
Jackie, can I say?
Sure. I just want to point out that the team that we had, and I know nobody's suggesting otherwise directly, but it may come off as an inference, that the team we had work on this, they were not charged with finding the cheapest alternative. While people may not agree, and it's completely understandable, and you're right as a person to feel differently, I just want to make sure we're not suggesting that safety was not a consideration. The team investigated that fully. I'm very confident in my staff's capacity to do that. They were very thoughtful about that process. They reported all of that back to us. Again, you may not agree, but I assure you, there's only one reason all of us are here, and it's children. And the last thing we want to do is provide something that's going to harm them. So to their estimation, based on the great deal of research that they did over a long period of time, they determined that it was safe first. And then they looked at the cost alternatives. I just want to make sure I punctuate that, because I want to make sure that the work of the team is not minimized in any way, not intentionally. But that is very important, because they did, we talked about that at great length. And while I wasn't on the team, they reported directly to me. And I am assuring you that that was their consideration. Again, you may not agree, and that's perfectly fine. But that was their task. And I am satisfied that they did that with that intention in mind.
Thank you. Are you clear, are we clear on next step?
Yeah, I think, so David, maybe I'll touch base with you tomorrow, and we can figure out a time, how to get... Do you know how long it will take for you to get everything, just an estimate?
An estimate of...
Of how long it would take to get that information together?
Sometime in the middle of next week.
Okay.
It's already at the end of the week.
Okay, sure. So I'll touch base with David, and I'll touch base with you.
Can I have one more? Thank you. So this is not related to this, and I assure you, in the budget presentation, it doesn't even mention turf, because it has nothing to do with this. And I realize it's a very long evening, and people are probably tired, but I have to tell you that there should be as much concern about the budget, and I would welcome you to please stay for the presentation that's coming next, because it is extremely concerning to us. And I would like as many people as possible to understand where we're coming from when we say that.
Okay, so, thank you very much for your time and for coming out. Do you have something else?
Nope.
Anybody need a couple-minute break?
Yeah, a couple minutes. For people who do need to leave, just to give us a few minutes.
Okay, so we'll take a couple-minute break? We can move now. But we are encouraging everyone to hang out.
Emily says her last essay, she's like, "Oh my god, I've got these things." I can do something. It was very agile compared to Michelle Obama's speech. She's like, "Oh my god," I don't know what to compare it as. It was a test question. Yeah, once, I heard, once a year starts. Although I'll have a better answer than two years ago. Yeah. Obviously, what's possible, she likes that. That's the only thing I know. You have to make every decision to find her. Yeah, otherwise. I'm worried being a weird kid to mail her. But she's coming home this summer, so she's doing volunteer work to save the day. A little frame over just to be sure. So I get her one more summer, so I imagine that she'll probably get her. And then Emily's getting her exercise. May 28th, she's so excited, she has first. And she's doing some musical arts and karaoke. She's here with her company right now. Everyone's at school. And it's time to really see a change. Very, this is what she wanted to call it. You know they all said donkey pounds? So the TERFs that bad. I mean, the TERFs like, don't play. Yeah, go grab a seat.
How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, very nice to meet you as well. Hi, John.
Okay, we're gonna get back going. Okay, everyone take a seat, please. I want to thank everyone for staying for our very important budget presentation. I will now turn it over to Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. So while Jack is sitting down, I think it's important to know that the Red Sox are winning two to one in the second inning. We'll have more news for you at the end of the presentation.
More innings for us, all right.
You are. Thank you for remaining for the budget presentation. I think it's very important that people have the background information and factual information of where we are right now with the budget. So I'm happy to share this with you and then answer any questions at the end of the presentation. First, in terms of the process, I wanted to let you know that we took a very thorough process and included literally everyone that we could in the school district. We believe that it is extremely important that the people who are implementing the curriculum, the instruction, the assessments in the district, the people that are providing support services to our children, the administrators who are working with the parents and the students every day, they're providing their lenses on any recommendations that we make in terms of the budget. So, we started with our strategic plan and our data analysis of our goals for the future. Then we went to faculty and staff and asked them for their feedback on the current state, on future plans, on things that they felt may not be necessary or could be shifted as resources in the district. All of that information from all six schools was brought back to us and the cabinet, which is the leadership team in the district, reviewed all of that information and now looked at it from a pre-K to 12 perspective. Something that bubbles up as a priority in one particular school, when compared with the priority of another school, sometimes it becomes clear to the team that it falls just below or maybe it rises above, but we have to look at the pre-K to 12 because we can't provide the same level of resources to every school every year, unfortunately. Then we brought that back to faculty and staff for their review. We explained to them the reasons why things were perhaps shifted or some priorities were put in front of others. And then it was brought to the executive team, which is the central office staff, where we reviewed that and went back to a balcony view, reviewed all the data, made sure that it made sense for where we're looking to go as a district, and did our first presentation to the budget subcommittee and have basically taken it on the road ever since. This is what I am using as the definitions for our targets in terms of the budget. So, this is the foundation of all of the rest of the presentation, basically. I thought it was important, perhaps it's the teacher part of me, to compartmentalize how we view those priorities that I explained. And so, last year, fiscal year 19, which is this year that we're in right now, 2018-19, we are currently operating in what's called, what we're terming a reactive or an essential budget. In other words, we are only providing the staff and with the, we're only providing the staff and/or resources as a means to respond to a current need, problem, mandate, citation from something that has been noted as being less than acceptable. It may not fully meet that mandate, but in some cases we try to take incremental steps in that direction. That is where we're operating right now. We are not in, for example, proactive. Proactive is preparing for an imminent or developing need or mandate. From our interaction and research, either at the town, state, or federal level, we know certain trends are coming, we know that mandates are coming, we know that changes are coming in education, and we believe we need to at least begin incremental steps again toward working to putting those things in place. Not doing that, of course, results in those items eventually becoming reactive when they ultimately get here. Strategic is when we're planning for the challenging and evolving needs of the future, whether that's career, higher education, it includes staff and/or resources that students in our peer communities already have access to. So, these are things that we are looking at when we're planning for 2031 and 2032. Those are the years we look at, not next year or five years from now. Those are the years that our kindergartners will be graduating from high school and entering the workforce and going to college or entering the workforce. And for that reason, we're always looking at strategic approaches of how we can educate the children to prepare them for that reality. Again, many of the things we have deposited in that category are things that our peer communities already have in place. They're not out of the box thinking, they're not really what we would call innovative. Innovative is what I put off the chart here. Innovative is what we believe our staff right now and our administrators have the capacity, the capability to be able to work toward, but clearly it's a step above strategic. That includes developing current edge, cutting edge, state-of-the-art opportunities and programming that prepares students to be among the top thinkers and creators in a global society. Again, as educators and professionals in the field, we are aware of what those things are, but you can see from a budgeting perspective where that falls on the continuum right now for us. Below all of that, the polar opposite, is a regressive budget. This is what we continually try to avoid. A regressive budget is one where we reduce or eliminate staff and/or resources. It restricts access to programming, it reduces non-core content, it sends the district backwards in terms of development or strategy. It's an overall loss in programming, progress, keeping things current, or even reacting to the needs that are currently before us. So, as I said last year, we operated at FY19, we didn't expect we would be above that. However, in terms of planning, it's always important for us to envision what's best for children. Some of these things we are very creative with and we are able to implement them in cost neutral ways, so we always have to envision what that might be. You can't see them, but I assure you, there are several things in each category, not a full and complete list, but definitely the things we could actually assign a dollar figure to in the process of coming up with concrete budget for people to consider. So I'm just gonna take a look at reactive essential because that's where we anticipated we may be this year. These are the items that are in this list. I'm just taking them and I'm making them in a manner that you can see them better. And I will talk about each of them because we feel these are reactive but essential. So we also call this category essential. First, the adjustment counselor, which is a certified mental health provider or a certified social worker. We have an increasing need for reactive services from support staff in the mental health arena. The reason I'm parcelling out reactive there is because there are also proactive needs in terms of adjustment counselors and mental health support, but that's not this. This is just the reactive for situations that have already bubbled up or students that are already in crises. SEL, which is social emotional learning, training and materials, also reactive. There are therapeutic services and curricular components that we can present as educators to be proactive, to help keep children from becoming dysregulated, but that's not this. This is purely reactive to students that are already not regulated and already having significant difficulty in the learning environment. And then professional development in these areas, which is for the same purpose. Again, with a lack of appropriate support staff, we're relying more and more on our educator and on our educators to provide these services. They need the training necessary in order to provide those services. To give you a very small snapshot of the challenges we're facing right now, as of this year, 11% of all the students in the district on an individualized education plan qualify for emotional disability services. That's 76 of our youngsters who have a disability based specifically on social emotional needs. 28% of students who are outplaced are outplaced due to a social emotional disability. That's 21 students. Outplacement means we have exhausted all of the resources we have in the district and the team has made a determination that we cannot appropriately educate that child within the district. They either attend a day program out of district as a specialized service provider or a residential if that level of need is necessary. These are extremely important placements, they can cost upwards of $200,000 per student, not including transportation, it doesn't include transportation if it's a day program, which we are also responsible for providing. It's very discouraging that we know this statistic right now, but in the four-state area, there are 19 hospitals with no available placements for our students. We have literally had to call all over Massachusetts, Connecticut, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, to find placements when we have a child that has a critical need. We have had children in emergency rooms for psychiatric issues for 24 to 48 hours because no one can intake that child and there are no services available. We have children in states around the country because we do not have availability in the local areas. That is obviously a broader issue and it is a much bigger problem that all of our colleagues are facing. This is how it's impacting Easton. In terms of our requests for tutoring outside of school before a placement or instead of a placement being made, most of these are due to psychiatric hospitalizations or confinement in the home due to significant anxiety or depression. Three years ago, we had 35 of these requests. Last year, we had 65 of these requests. This year, as of February, we've had 33. So we're sadly on target to meet or exceed last year's number of students having these difficulties. And 19 of our students are homeless in shelters through DCF or in foster care. All of these scenarios create a situation where students require more support in school in order to be successful. All of those supports are extremely expensive. Then, an English language teacher. It says .5. .5 means halftime. We need several English language teachers. We are, again, incrementally reacting to this need. English language learners are leveled by testing that's done by professionals in the district, levels one through six. And depending on their level, it depends on what is the recommended service provider hours that they receive to help them be successful in education. Before I get to that, these are all the federal and state laws that we are bound by to provide a fair and appropriate education to these students. We are responsible for removing the boundaries that impede their progress in school. Right now, foundational level is what is determined to be 1, 2, 3. The service provided hours for this is at least two to three 45-minute periods per day by a licensed provider. A transitional level student is 4, 6. That's at least one period of instruction per day until that student moves to another level or tests out of needing the services. Currently, we have 56 students in levels 1, 2, and 3 in the district. We have 10 in levels 4, 5, 6. I took the minimum of two periods a day for 56 students is 20,000, over 20,000 periods that we should be providing this instruction to our students. For these 10 students, it's 1,800 hours, for a total of 21,960 hours. We have three full-time professionals in the district. If you add the number of periods that those professionals have per day for 180 days, it comes out to 2,700 periods they can offer these youngsters right now. I've said often that we don't meet the level of service recommended, but I wanted to punctuate exactly how low below we are and that we're not asking for a halftime person because that will help meet the need. We're trying to incrementally react to the need. Elementary science program. We had new standards released in the state of Massachusetts in 2016. We have yet to be able to purchase the resources and materials for our catified teachers in science. They are working independently or together to buy their own materials, to borrow materials from one another. They are attending professional development to try to understand the new standards because some of them have changed significantly or shifted to different grade levels. If we look at our elementary, if we look at our science grades at high school where it counts for graduation, this is a competency determination. For English language arts, proficient or advanced, you can see that Easton is at or above all of our peers. For math, we're at or above most of our peers, a great deal more than most of our peers. In science, we are marginally less successful than we are in ELA in math. However, there are some confounding factors. For example, our students take the ninth grade physics exam, many other of our peer communities take the 10th grade biology exam, among other variables. However, this is currently, this does not include the students who are continuing each year without the appropriate resources and their teachers continuing without the level of support and professional development that they need to adhere to the new standards that these students will be tested on to graduate from high school when they reach the ninth and 10th grade. We need the professional development, but we also need the materials. There is a science curriculum committee meeting currently to try to work toward this end. Assistant Superintendent Kristi Pruitt has been working with them to come up with a program. We're hoping to implement that program next year and that's one of our priorities. We're already behind on that, which is, of course, why it's considered reactive. To add to that, social studies has just been released as new standards in Massachusetts. So if we do an incremental add of grades over several years, that is longer that it will take for us to then turn our attention to social studies and to provide the resources, professional development, and curriculum for the teachers in that area as well. So this is why we consider So this is why we consider this a priority area. Mitigating facility failures. We have three pre-K to 2 schools that are, have been deemed to be ineffective in terms of the required space for students. We have received citations from the state for inappropriate space for some special education programs, which is why we are actively working with a grant provider right now at the state level to hopefully have a new school for pre-K to 2. These are just a few of the issues. Most expensive of which are the abatements and remediations for asbestos in all three buildings. It is the one area in the district that we operate on a proactive level. Everything else is reactive. Because what we won't do, obviously, is wait until there is a breach of anything that has asbestos in it before we take care of it. So we have certified experts looking at it constantly. And if it is approaching a dangerous level, even in the most remote way, we replace that immediately with patches. If we do not get the school project, we will need to fix them permanently because the patches will not last. We are working with MSBA, which is the Massachusetts School Building Authority. They have a very stringent process. To even be considered for a building project, you need to be of high need. And they did determine we are in that space. These are just some of the issues that we have with the three buildings right now. It's important to note that in 2014, Doran Whittier, an architectural and design firm, was hired by the town to do an evaluation of all town buildings, including the school buildings. And they determined at that time what would be the base repair cost of repairing the three elementary schools. This past year, Perkins Eastman, who was hired as the designer for the potential new school project, did the same assessment. When they worked in escalation costs since 2014, their figures were almost identical. So these estimations are certainly not that of the school department. These are two independent professional organizations who have determined the base repair costs of the buildings, which means it keeps the walls up, it takes the asbestos out, and it brings them up to compliance on ADA, seismic activity, and fire suppression systems, period. It does not take offices out of closets, which creates airflow issues in the building because people are not intended to be in closets. It does not meet our mandates for the state in terms of providing more appropriate special education spaces. It does nothing programmatically. It just keeps the building standing. The estimated repair over time is $86,500,000. We are now working with a school planning committee to come up with potential configurations. The most expensive configuration on the table right now is a $95.6 million building. If we move forward with this project and we work with MSBA, we currently have a 52.26% reimbursement rate on eligible costs, which averages out to about 40 to 45% of all costs. According to Perkins Eastman, this would result in a $65 million cost for the taxpayers. This includes all repairs and all programmatic changes and bringing the building up to 21st century standards. Finally, we have reading interventionists. These are people who provide tier-three support for students that are having significant difficulty with reading. And then there are several national benchmarks for this. Certainly, one goal is from the Children's Reading Foundation, which encourages school districts and communities to adopt a 90% reading goal by the end of grade three. There is a tremendous amount of research that substantiates the fact that a child's reading level at the end of grade three is a tremendous predictor of their future success in school. The goal by the end of grade three is that 90% of the students aren't reading at the third grade level. Some students developmentally mature a little bit later. Some aren't ready, and so we follow them and make sure we bring up their reading level. But the goal is for 90% of them to read at the end of third grade. The most recent benchmark assessment we've done in Easton was in January. And in January, 43% of our grade three students were reading below grade level. This is not a situation where our teachers are all of a sudden not knowing how to teach. This is not an indication that something's wrong with our children. However, what we are seeing in our schools is a societal implication, the least of which is devices and technology. As someone who has taught reading and taught teachers to teach reading in the past, I can tell you that there is a big difference with a child who has a print-rich environment at home and out in the community and one that does not. Recent studies have even proven that children who read from a book with their parents have a higher reading rate overall than students who are looking at a Kindle or an electronic device, even if it includes pictures or sounds or incentives. There is a very strong indicator between making connection between a letter and a sound and a word and a sound and the meaning and connecting it to a picture in order for them to effectively engage in the reading process. All of that is lost even from that one activity. Now you include signs in the community. Any kind of electronic sign or scrolling sign or a sign that uses an unusual font that a child would not recognize readily is not helping the child learn how to read. They need to see static writing. They need to see static signs. That's just not in society anymore. When you go to a parent's home, you very infrequently see newspapers lying about, magazines on the table. Most adults now purchase these online and read them on their own. The ancillary exposure to students when those were in the home was a significant contributor to their recognizing letters, sounds, and words, as well as meaning. Even a doctor's office nowadays, you don't often see magazines. You don't see highlights, which my children used to look at. You see video games. You see screens. This is all contributing to the support that teachers need in supporting the children. So they're coming into us less prepared than they have been before, and we are backfilling before we are able to move them forward. So it's more about that, but we still have to address the issue. And so we're looking to bring in interventionists who will work with those students who are identified even in kindergarten that need that one-on-one attention to get them up to speed more quickly. Those are our reactive requests for the year. And we wouldn't even ask for anything if we didn't think they were, in fact, essential. But we did go through an exercise of proactive and strategic. I will not go through these in detail because it's not salient to this conversation. We're just not there in terms of the budget. But to give you an idea of what we mean by proactive and the potential implications in the future, I'll give you one example that we've identified in our proactive list, and that's full free tuition. Full day, free tuition for all kindergarten students. This is something that we see coming as a requirement and also something that we need to provide our students so they aren't falling even further behind. I know you can't see this map in detail. What I would ask you to do, this map is from 2014-15 school year. I shared this during, in that school year in this district. And now 2018-19 is now. If you even just look in our region and then you look in the region here, what you should see if you vacillate back and forth is that the colors are disappearing. Anything that is clear on those maps is a community that offers full free-day kindergarten to all the kindergartners in their community. The darkest color is the highest level of tuition charged. The reason that some of these colors, especially in our area, are changing is because when I spoke into my colleagues, they're doing what we're recommending on a proactive level. They are slowly reducing the tuition and working those costs into the operating budget so they can eventually switch over to full free-day kindergarten for all students. It is our prediction, especially now where our legislators are talking about the importance of pre-K engagement, that once the level of communities reaches a tipping point in those specific communities remaining, like the ones remaining today, Duxbury, Situwick, Concord, that the state is going to make the determination that those towns can afford to do this, and they will make it mandatory. If we were to have this mandate in one year, it would be a $700,000 to $800,000 increase to our budget, which would decimate virtually every other program. I then took a look at what this meant for our community cohort. I chose 17, including ourselves, 17 local communities. These are the communities that are identified by the Department of Education as our contemporaries. It's called the DART analysis. It's also all of the communities that were in the operational audit that the town completed recently. And then there were only three of our neighbors who were left that weren't included, and so I included them in Foxborough and Sharon. Everything else was already identified by other interest groups. We have the lowest number of students taking full-day kindergarten. Anything that you see from North Andover over, they offer full-day kindergarten to their children. These towns do not, however, and even the state is considerably higher than we are. Walpole is currently working toward it. They reduced their tuition this year, and they're continuing to do that each year. Redding is a level-three district that is not performing at the standard that Easton wants to perform at. And Easton is here. 88.5% of our kindergartners benefit from full-day kindergarten. In order to really understand the impact, when I was the assistant superintendent here, I did an analysis of this district. I used 12 indicators from kindergarten to grade three. I followed the same students, and I extracted any students that had left or moved into the community anywhere between kindergarten and grade three. So I only used the students that had been here that whole time. Of those 12 indicators, I determined which had been in half-day kindergarten and which had been in full-day kindergarten. And as a result, 100% of the students that were in full-day kindergarten outperformed 100% of the half-day students in kindergarten on 100% of the indicators. There was not one outlier. And so we feel very strongly that our students should be educated at the same level that these students are. All of these children are educated earlier and better by trained professionals than our children are, the students that are not in full-day kindergarten. In addition, those students tend to become the students that are falling behind. And not only do we have an ethical obligation to keep them up to speed, but they also become more expensive to educate as they get older. And then strategic. This is our list. I'm happy to share the entire list of proactive, strategic, and reactive with anyone, but I'm not going to explore that this evening. Innovative and regressive, I already discussed. Before I get into the costs of what we're proposing this year, these are the savings revenue and cost avoidance measures we've taken in the last few years. So people have asked, have you cut anything yet? This is only a partial list. Not only are there revenue sources on here that we've explored, but there are also very uncomfortable things that we've had to do, like outsource our special education drivers, increase our fees for athletics, increase our activities fees, things that have not been popular with people, but we had to be regressive in those areas. This is, and again, I don't expect you to see this. I will highlight the important facts for you. This is level service. In other words, if we roll over last year's salaries to this year's, I'm sorry, this year's salaries to next year, because that's the budget we're working on. And we include our normal contractual increases. We are obligated to roll over these increases in transportation and legal. And then we include out-of-district tuition. We estimate it will at least increase by $300,000 next year. We had $2,000, I'm sorry, $2 million allocated for out-of-district placement this year. We also invested in additional $400,000. And as of this month, we are $300,000 overspent on the line, which is why we're adding $300,000 to next year. And again, that's the increase of need, but also severity and the lack of resources locally for these children. All of that is a 3.20 increase from last year. Just the rollovers. This is non-discretionary or adding any of the priorities I discussed. When we had our very first meeting with the town, we were put in as a placeholder at 2.75%, which resulted in a over $1.5 million deficit on the town budget. And our level services are rolling over at 3.2. But then we look at those items that we said were priorities. And these were the estimated costs, and we realized we're already over, and the town is still not budgeted. So we cut or eliminated every single one of them. We kept readings interventionists, elementary science program, and adjustment counselor as the priority for the reasons I illustrated earlier. Everything else was either eliminated or reduced. We decided to keep at least some professional development because if we are eliminating some of these other areas and resources for teachers, we have to train them properly to do the work on their own. The children will still be here. This resulted in an overall, other than the level spending, this, I'm sorry. After adding these items, we realized we needed to do even more cuts. So we looked at our current operational budget and what could we cut there? We cut technology. Again, instead of being proactive so that we can get to a classroom if something fails and we can fix it with parts that we pre-purchase, a teacher will have to stop their lesson. We will order what they need, and they may get it in the next day or week. We also slowed down our replacement of things like smart boards and printers. Again, they will be replaced when they fail. A grade-four teacher, a grade-one teacher, a high school English teacher, and a grade-six teacher, those positions have been eliminated. All of them have the same number of students. It will result in larger class sizes. Library assistants in the elementary, in the middle school and the high school, those positions have been eliminated. Library and office clerks in all of the K-5 schools, their days of work have been reduced. All of our Eames and Easton middle school have had a reduction of 10% of their school supplies. In the middle school and the high school, we sometimes have overages. An overage is when a teacher with a full teacher schedule gives up their prep period in exchange for payment to teach an extra section because we don't have enough teachers. We're getting rid of all those overages, and so those classes, again, need to be absorbed in other classes. It will result in higher class sizes. We had one remaining driver from the outsourcing. That driver will need to move to an open position at a custodian job in one of the buildings. We're also reducing an evening custodian at the elementary school. It's an open position. Instead of advertising a full-time position, we'll advertise a part-time position. So far, our speech and language service hours have reduced based on the individual education plans. And so we think we can reduce a speech pathologist position that certainly could change based on the needs of the students. At Central Office, we've also reduced all of our supplies and resources by 16%. And we're limiting the number of substitutes we're going to be able to hire at each of the schools. Doing all of this with the additions that we feel we need came to an overall decrease of 48,000. of $48,900 and an overall increase over last year's budget of 3.083%, which is still not closing the deficit on the town side. The reason I am still pointing this one out is because I've done multiple presentations so far where we really felt this was the absolute most we could do without in the district and still try to function properly. That put us in a reactive and regressive state, both, because we were doing some additions. I know you can't see this, but this is readily available as a handout. This tells you the percentage. I didn't go over all of them, but it will tell you the percentage of each of those categories I talked about. This one is reactive, which I just discussed, 3.083. Proactive would be a 6.3% increase, and strategic would be a 9.4% increase. And what I mean by this is it already includes these. For example, you wouldn't move to strategic without incorporating all of your reactive and proactive needs. So this includes all of them. However, there still remains a $1 million shortfall for the town as a whole. And so, this evening, we need to present possible more cuts for the school department. We will need to cut more. We just don't know yet how much. We're hoping to have that information in the next two weeks, but we have to determine what it is we have left to eliminate. Out of our proposals, all of the positions. The adjustment counselor, the English language teacher, the reading interventionists, and the facilities needs. But then we need to go back to the operating budget again, because we do not think this will be enough. So we're looking at extracurricular activity stipends, special education out of district. What this means is if we reduce that $300,000, right now, there is an account on the town side that we put away a couple of years ago in the event of a drastic emergency. There's $200,000 there. However, if we decrease it by $300,000 or $200,000 and rely on the $200,000 in the fund, it may not be enough at the end of next year. Positions. Reductions in current positions by days or hours, eliminations and reorganizations of entire departments. Substitutes. Cutting the number of substitute teachers we can provide when people are out of the district. And school supplies, which were already reduced, we're trying right now to figure out what the percentage is going to be to reduce them even further. We are now in a fully regressive budget for FY '20. We may need to go further than that, but that's where we've stopped at this point, because we are not comfortable identifying the specific positions just yet, but the ones that we have proposed are going to have to be taken off the table. Before I end, I just want to explain where we are in terms of funding overall compared to our contemporaries and peers. These are the same seventeen towns that I used previously. Our per pupil expenditure in Eastern is just over $13,000. The state average is almost $16,000 per student, and you can see where everyone else lies on this trajectory. If we were to make or receive the amount of aid that the state, the average state student receives by the number of students we have, that would be a total increase of $8.3 million to our budget every year. Even if we look at a midline town like Walpole, that would be an increase of $5.4 million to our budget every year. We are operating with far less than our colleagues in other towns and communities and still providing an excellent education. But there are some breaking points, and there are some really taxing environments for our educators, our administrators, and our facilities right now. Just as a reminder, the $5.4 million we would have if we received the average that Walpole receives is still less, is far more actually, than even our proposed strategic budget. So if we were to receive all of our reactive needs, proactive needs, and strategic needs, we estimate that it would cost $3.89 million. So if you're doing a comparison to other districts and what they may or may not have, the cost per pupil really helps to explain why that is the case.
So why don't we do what we did before on the school committee, go back and ask questions to Dr. Cabral, and then we'll open it up for our other questions. Okay. That's depressing. Thank you, Dr. Cabral. I know you had to put a lot of that information together relatively quickly. For those of you who don't know, Dr. Cabral presented her budget to a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee earlier this week. Between Monday and today, we found that we would have to make significant more cuts, and so she came up with these options in a very short turnaround. And as she said, we're still waiting to find out what the final number's going to be that we need to cut, but we're just trying to think about it ahead of time so we don't have to be surprised. Questions from the board?
So I have a couple of comments and maybe questions. First of all, in thinking about, when I went back and looked through what our budget was this year, and then where we are in terms of spending this year so far, and I know we're going to get an update on that-
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. I have three, I mean, a long list of big concerns, but I have a couple that jumped out. One is I'm really concerned about the facility and building maintenance line. When I looked at where we are this year in terms of what we've spent so far, and I can only imagine that that's gone up, I'm very concerned that we're not going to have enough for what may happen next year. I mean, if a boiler goes, if, you know, if there's a huge piece of asbestos that appears in one of the primary schools and we need to replace it, that's very expensive. So without even thinking about what you've just presented, I've already had bells going off. My other area of concern is I looked real quickly at utilities. That's a line item that we're over in already this year. Now, maybe it's evened out since we've looked last December, but I don't know. So that was another area that I was a little bit concerned about. My third, really, is special education. Because of the federal funding, because of our ability in terms of resources, and honestly, next year, I worry about tapping into that $200,000 this year, and let me tell, next year's going to be worse. This year, we've incorporated a 1% increase for our salaries. Next year's two and a half. I don't know where that money will come from, and part of me says I do know where that money will come from. It will really hurt general education, because we are required by law to support special education. So I'm very concerned about, you know, moving money out of special education. I really am. I think it'll hurt us a lot.
I agree.
I know. My questions are, is there any way that, and this is really for probably not tonight to answer, but just thoughts, is there any way we can do some really creative shifting? By that, I mean, can we move, it's almost a three-line shift, and this would impact students and families, and unfortunately, it would probably impact the most vulnerable students and their families, because it always does. So if we could shift out of our, is there anything we could shift out of our operating budget over to the revolving accounts? And then, because I know those revolving accounts are pretty maxed out already, is there anything that we could shift to boosters? You know, we've got, we've got equipment and purchases in athletics, can we shift it to the boosters and make them say, we just, we don't have the money in this year's budget to buy new equipment and new materials, could the boosters pick it up for a couple of years? Same thing for the music department. Tempo is a really great fundraising organization. Can we shift stuff that's in the budget line items and say, we can't afford it anymore, maybe the boosters can pick it up? I mean, that's the only, there are already strong parent organizations out there, maybe they can help. I don't know.
So the, we looked at, we looked at all the revolving accounts, of course. We looked at, we keep looking at grants and so forth. We've looked at funding sources and revenue generators. In terms of operating budget, an example of, we did do that. Revolving account is an account, we have to spend every dime by June 30th every year. You cannot go from one fiscal year to the next, but a revolving account can continue for things like our pay-to-ride program in transportation, or our kindergarten tuition and facilities, when we collect facilities usage. And we did look at all of those lines. They are, of course, for emergencies, and they do not grow incredibly every year. Some of them have a decent amount of money in them, but then they're going to be gone as soon as we spend it, because they don't generate that much every single year. So we did look at where we could shift that. So for example, we have gone over by almost $200,000 in facilities this year. So we had $150,000 in there. We shifted that to the revolving account. That is going to eat up the revolving account. That will get us through next year, but then that's gone. So that obviously creates a cliff for the following year. So we don't want to do that too much, but we did do that because we actually exhausted everything before we came to actually reducing people's positions. In terms of the boosters, not every organization has a booster, and so that wouldn't apply to everybody, but certainly, we are looking at extracurricular activities, and those activities are already included. We may not be able to-
To support them.
Activities.
Go ahead. You look like you're biting your tongue.
Sadly, I think we've reached the point where the only place we can go is positions. I mean, actual people. Now that, I mean, we've cut, you've already cut positions that we feel strongly that we need, that we were going to request to add, but, I mean, we've exhausted that path. Now, there will be some positions that have to be added, basically for legal reasons and because we have been cited, right? I mean, aren't we still going to have to add-
If we're not planning on adding anything-
Nothing.
So we will continue to be-
So we'll continue to be cited, then? So we'll be below the-
We have eliminated the proposed positions. We've eliminated positions by attrition, and we've eliminated positions of people. We did all three of those in this budget.
You've eliminated personnel?
Yes.
So not just-
Not by, not just by attrition. In other words, someone's-
Not all of those positions were by attrition. Employees have already been notified.
Right. Somebody who has a job this year is not going to have one next year.
More than-
More than wants somebody.
So we have exhausted that. I mean, we've exhausted the open positions and the, you know, people that are retired and so on. So basically, the only place that offers significant savings is people, unfortunately. I don't see any other, I mean, you have some of these financial-
I will say, while they are savings, and we are, we do have to consider more positions, they're not significant savings, because you need to pay unemployment. So it's not even a dollar-for-dollar figure. So unfortunately, you have to eliminate more people than you need to in terms of your savings for next year.
Cover the cost, because we pay unemployment ourselves. I mean, that's, yep. Well, would it be appropriate for me to ask a selectman in the audience a question?
It's up to the selectman.
Are you eliminating any people on the town side?
At this point, we are painfully aware, on the town side and the school side, that this $1 million is incredibly difficult to address. We have a revenue problem. So that, at the moment, I spoke to Connor Reeve, Town Administrator in Tidak, before I came to the meeting, and he's looking at all alternatives. He's already spoken with Dr. Cabral, and if people saw the presentations on Wednesday night of the town committees, the town departments, you would be, if you didn't see it, you'd be amazed at what people do in this town, not only the school department, but in all the town departments, completely underfunded, under-resourced. The most dramatic one that we saw was the Department of Public Works, where the highway department has five people and needs 16, according to our, the audit that we had done in terms of comparing to other communities. Police department is four short of what they should be at. The fire department's four short. So everybody is in this difficult situation. So we're looking at every option that we possibly can to be able to address this need. I know that Dr. Cabral and Connor had a conversation about the hope that we will have a new revenue projection coming in April. So that might reduce the amount that we have to cut, but right now, it is $1 million. And that is $1 million, originally, we had $2 million in revenue shortfall. Now we're down to $1 million.
But you didn't quite answer my question.
Well, so, maybe I can. So I talked to Connor today, and, you know, the presentations were just made last night, it seems like-
Right, I know.
A year ago at this point. But as Mr. Barger said, all options are on the table, and I think he's having discussions with each department. I don't think any decisions have been made by any departments yet. It's my guess, I don't know that for sure, but he is having those discussions. So we don't know where we're all going to end up at this point.
But just to be clear, our reactive budget of 3.08, it is confirmed that that does need to be cut further. What we don't know is how much more it needs to be cut. We will be eliminating the proposals. We don't know if we have to go deeper than that. And also, to reiterate what Mr. Barger said, this is not the case of one department hogging all of the money over another department. This is a town-
Issue.
Issue. I sat through all of those hearings, and I meet with the department heads all the time. We're all well aware that we are all operating in reactive or regressive budgets. So it may, it may be, and this is not what you said, of course, but it may be enticing to say, well, can another department just give us the money and we'll be fine? But the money is not in the town right now. But I just wanted to make it clear that when Mr. Barger says we don't have the numbers yet, which we don't, we do know that even with the 3.08, there still is a deficit, and the school department does need to cut more to cut that deficit. The rest of the town does not have the capacity to cut the rest of it themselves.
Go ahead. I do have another comment. I just, this is actually just for public consumption. Some people say to me, why do we have the administrators we have? We actually are about the lowest in the state in terms of administrative support for our teachers. The notion that a school system can function with just teachers and students, and you don't need oversight and people developing curriculum and people providing additional training and additional oversight and so on, is just, it just amazes me that people say, why do we need these administrators? We are, we probably have a third as many administrators as school systems that we would like to emulate. So I really want people to be clear that that is not an option, because you can't have as many staff. We have full and part-time, total staff of about 600 people, right?
Yes.
The idea that you wouldn't need any oversight or supervision or supports for those people-
Management.
Management. Well, that includes management, of course, but, yeah, yeah.
Well, we're required by law to have certain positions, and then we're required by law to fulfill certain duties. There's an evaluation process of every individual. There is a- There is a management process that is required. There are assessment processes that are required by the state, by the government. We can't not complete those tasks, and there's no way our teachers can do any of that with what they're already doing, aside from the fact they don't have the ability to do that during their day when they're with children 100% of the time. The operational audit did say we were among the lowest in terms of the administrators that we have, and I need to point out that our administrators, almost all of our administrators are being paid below market value. That is a precipitous position to be in as a management person because if one of them were to leave in order to fill them, we would have a budget shortfall in order to get someone We have principals who earn less than teachers and counselors in this district, and we're just lucky they're here. So, we are not by any means inflating their salaries. So, they're already working, like, two or three people for a lot less.
So, I have one other question because we've talked about kind of all of the cuts. And obviously, you know, when you're cutting teacher, it's apparent that class size is going to increase. But I guess I'd like to have some insight about what other things are liable to be affected that we might not readily think about. So, I'm thinking about curriculum writing. I'm thinking about, you know, is this going to slow down a lot of the progress that we've tried to make over the last several years?
There's... There was a lot of thought into choosing the word "regressive" for this budget. There is no other way to describe it than that we are going backwards. We are not maintaining. Reactive is, in some areas, going backwards. Regressive is 100% going backwards. Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Sears?
I was just wondering if there was kind of a collection put out of the citations of things that were not meeting, kind of how a lot of the NCAS boards they posted, and it gets discussed on the rooms, you know, where people's... Is that generally put out there, that this is all the things we got cited for this year?
Yes. The Department of Education does a coordinated program review of everything in the district, and they publish all their results. You can find it on the Department of Education website. They give corrective action, what has been done, what has not been done, when it is due, the reports that are required, and so forth. They're all available to the public.
Are there, like, financial penalties that the town gets for not meeting those things?
Yes. Well, if you don't, first of all, you are... You have the potential of losing state and federal grants because if you... That's the reason they have the program in place, is for you to receive those grants. So, we could lose our federal and state grants. Second of all, if they are not corrected, many of them are civil rights violations. And so, you create a situation where you put the district at great risk for violating the civil rights of students.
Could you give an example? Because I know that sounds alarming on the face of it, but, you know, they're very particular, the coordinated review people.
An example of a citation?
Yeah.
Yes. We, in some elementary schools, one example of the citation that we received was that we are providing services, occupational therapy services, in the back of the library. All special education spaces need to be at or above the standard of general education spaces. And so, they want us to build a room that has walls to the ceiling, proper ventilation, and so forth. Certainly, the area has proper ventilation now, but we have temporary walls up because it's part of the library. And so, it doesn't completely shut it off from the rest of the library. So, it's not considered an acceptable space. We also have speech therapy happening in community spaces within the building, which we realize is problematic, where we don't have enough space for them. So, you can imagine if someone is trying to assess a child's pronunciation or articulation, it is extremely important to have a space that's appropriate to do that. We also don't have those spaces. So, we move classrooms, classes out of classrooms, or people out of offices at certain times of the day to provide those services. Go ahead.
I just have one more question about the... Have you eliminated adjustment counselor? Is there an estimate of how this is going to affect hours per, like, student... Addressing student aid hours per current adjustment counselors versus what it would have been if they had it?
The hours-
Or just how it will affect-
It's really impossible to calculate the hours because that literally changes on a daily basis. A student in crisis, sometimes there is actually no warning. They may be a part of a traumatic incident. They may have a situation that manifests itself. They may have an illness that brings about a need or have been introduced to something outside of school that was very disturbing that manifests in school. So, it's very difficult to know. However, we know that we need to provide proactive resources to help children learn the management and de-escalation skills, to help themselves self-regulate and to cope with anxiety and stress in their lives. We don't provide that right now because we don't have time. Every single one of our mental health professionals is reactive in response to critical needs on a daily basis in the district. So, we already don't have the proactive. So, that contributes to the number of reactive incidents we have. They're reacting to that, and right now, our current professionals are overtaxed. I can't tell you by how many hours, but I can tell you that Teresa Skinner, our Director of Special Services, the Assistant Superintendent, myself, principals from other schools, have often had to intervene to help our professionals because they are unable to handle the number of crises in a day on their own. So, it is clear that we need more bodies in that role. That would not get us to fully reactive, and it certainly wouldn't get us to proactive. But we have a therapeutic program in the middle school in Richardson-Holstead right now, and they currently share a crisis counselor. And as you can imagine, the crisis at the middle school is going to happen when the crisis counselor is at Richardson-Holstead and vice versa. Or, more often than not, they're happening simultaneously. And so, the adjustment counselor we were proposing was to have one adjustment counselor at Richardson-Holstead and one at the middle schools of the therapeutic program for our students at the highest level of that reactive need.
Sure. I just want to point out one thing as well is that when we don't have the resources with the... We're in the business of children. That's our business. And when we don't have the resources to support them, we have to use alternate measures. So, we have to make a phone call for an ambulance to come get a child in crisis, which is then increasing the services that they need to provide. So, it really becomes a trickle effect.
It's also far more traumatic for the child.
Absolutely. Absolutely, and causes further traumatization for them. So, you know, I'm not taking anything away from our fire and police by any means, but it becomes a reaction which increases their need for services because we don't have the services, which then also causes a further reaction. If we're not preparing our students by third grade to read, you know, they build jails and prisons around the country by looking at the third-grade reading data. And if we're not preparing our children, then the police, you know, we have an increased need for police. It's just... It's such an institutional, you know, effect that it all has, and, I mean, maybe that's why I'm in this business, but I believe it all starts with education.
Well, and I just... Something occurred to me when you were saying that. So, if a child is in real crisis and we're reacting to it as opposed to proactively helping kids be prepared for those things, that crisis event isn't just affecting that child. It's affecting every kid that's in the classroom or in the school. When an ambulance has to come to a school, it's not just impacting that one child. And so, I think-
The classroom the child was in?
Yep.
We've had to evacuate classrooms because there's a child in the room in need. Class stops. Children are removed. Teacher has to receive assistance to help that child in need. And this is, unfortunately, on a regular basis. This is not just Easton. It's all of the towns that don't have the proactive means in place to help prepare the students for this escalation in mental health needs.
So, this was in Ed Week this week, and everybody knows these statistics, but it's just interesting. So, between 2005 and 2017, the proportion of teens 12 through 17 who reported the symptoms of a major depressive episode within the last year rose from 8.7% to 13.2%. And that... I don't think that trend is expected to move on.
No. This is the beginning of a spiral that will feed on itself and grow exponentially as a result.
So, what are our next steps?
In terms of the vote?
Well, in terms of deciding where the cuts-
Let me just see if anyone else is-
Oh, sorry.
Anyone else have any questions? Go ahead.
It seems like one of the most important things that we need to do from looking at that slide and listening to this information is to get that per-pupil expenditure number up.
Yeah.
And so, it's not going to happen overnight, but what can we do as citizens of this community and teachers and all of us people here and all those people that are listening? What can we do to help change that number? Because that seems like it's a significant turnaround if we could get even to that state level, isn't it?
Elizabeth, that's a great question. It is one of the things that we work on constantly. It's one of the reasons we're here as administrators. The three funding sources for any school district is Chapter 70. Funds from the state is very minimal from the federal government, and that has been... It's proposed that that's cut by another $7.1 billion anyway. So, the reimbursement from the state, which is made up of several things, should I give you an example? Grants, including entitlement grants from the state and federal government, which we're very concerned about with that $7.1 billion cuts, and local aid. So, basically, you have the Chapter 70, and... Which is made up of a foundation budget, and the local aid is what makes the difference from what the state says it costs to educate a child. It sounds like those are three simple areas, but every single one of those is very complicated. First of all, we don't qualify for most of the entitlement grants. The state has identified a formula, the foundation budget, which has 11 indicators. Every child, they sort of assigned a price tag to every child. A child in elementary school, high school, special needs, low income, English language learner, and there are actually nine levels of income, nine levels of low income, or seven levels of low income in there. All of those have a price on them. That foundation was set before healthcare costs increased, before special education costs skyrocketed. So, what they are saying it costs to educate that child is grossly underfunded. It's a flawed formula. And some of you may be aware, if you've heard about FBRC, Foundation Budget Review Commission, they have made several recommendations of things that should be changed in that formula. So, it's already a flawed formula, and we're working at the legislative level to try to make some of those changes. There are currently three proposals, one in the House, one in the Senate, and Governor Baker's. Not... All three of them do not benefit Easton. Some of them are very heavy in benefiting more urban centers and with high-income numbers. So, depending on if any of those pass, it would need to be the one that would even benefit Easton. So, that's the foundation budget. In addition to that, there are formulas that are used to determine things like wages. So, you have per capita income in a town, and you also have wages earned. So, all of us that work in Easton, no matter where we live, our wages count, our wages earned count for the town of Easton. Based on what that average is, also influences your reimbursement. So, for example, the average wage earned in Easton right now is $45,000. The average wage earned in Mansfield is $72,000. So, we receive 100% funding for each child on the flawed funding. Mansfield, for example, receives 105% for each student. 5% for each student is millions of dollars. So, just that wage factor... Okay, so what do we do about wage factor? Well, you have to have things in town that are... Have employees who make over $72,000. So, that's a town issue, right? And that's why they're working on things like the sewer project and so forth for the industrial park. You bring in, not necessarily homes, but you bring in high-tech industry, medical facilities, the patriots. Imagine Foxborough's wage adjustment factor. So, those are things that, as you said, are not overnight. We're aware of all of them. We're working very hard with our town leaders. We're working very hard with our senators and our representatives in terms of supporting the foundation budget changes. There is also a proposal. We receive $20 per child in minimum aid, $71,000 that we get. There is a proposal by Representative Josh Cutler in Duxbury to raise that to $100 per student. We are wholeheartedly supporting that. If you support that, you should reach out to your legislators to support that. The Mass Association of School Superintendents actually recommends $150 per student minimum aid. That would help us tremendously. That's only some of the issues. So, even though that's one, that one funding source, state reimbursement, has all those issues. There's also something called the circuit breaker. Those out-of-district costs that I explained. Circuit breaker is reimbursement for special education. So, if a child is placed out of district, whether it's in a day program or a residential, we are reimbursed a portion of that. So, they take four times the average cost of educating a student, which right now is about $44,000. The town is responsible for paying the first $44,000 of the student's tuition. If it's a $40,000 tuition, the town pays the whole thing. Above that, you receive a partial reimbursement. So, if it's a $100,000 placement, which is not by any means unusual in the town of Easton, we pay the first $40,000, and then we receive a partial reimbursement of the remaining $60,000. That is supposed to be funded... That reimbursement is supposed to be 75%. Over the last four years, that has slowly been decreasing. This year, it was down to 72%, and right now, the budget is proposing 65%, which would be a significant cut in that reimbursement for us. It's not even part of that budget. I don't know, sitting here in front of you now, how we would account for that if it isn't fully funded. And so, we are working actively with our legislators to urge them to fully fund the circuit breaker at 75%. So, you're asking as residents, as interested parties, things that you can do. Those are some of the things that you can do. Mass Association of School Superintendents, Mass Association of School Committees have all of this information with their recommendations on their websites. And you can also always contact one of us, and we can get you the resources you need. And then, again, we don't qualify for a lot of those grants. Even though the state says and acknowledges it costs more to educate students, for example, who are low income, the grants operate differently. It's not a per-pupil reimbursement. You have to meet a threshold. So, Title I, for example, has three components to it. Two of the highest reimbursements of that, you have to have a 5% low income rate. We have a 4.9% in Easton. So we have 4.9% of our students that are the higher cost to educate, and we do not qualify for those grants that would provide millions of dollars to help educate them. The third is local aid, and of course, it's not as simple as saying people just need to pay more taxes. The people of Easton already pay among the highest taxes in the state. Again, that's, those are town decisions that are made about priorities and directions and visions for the future. There are beautiful, beautiful spaces in Easton, and I'm sure they were strategically chosen for very good reasons, but none of them pay taxes, and they're not a revenue source. And if, if people choose to maintain that, that's perfectly fine. But that is, they have to understand the different things that they will be trading off for as a result. So those, those are town decisions, of course. So as a citizen, again, those are things that you should be aware of.
Any other questions? Sure?
I, I don't know if you kind of just answered this in some way, but I was just wondering, like, it sounds like all of the different committees are having emergency type sessions about cuts. Is there any discussion about whatever the terminology would be, like emergency revenue changes or like any short to long-term revenue changes?
There's only one. I'm not advocating for anything. I'm just answering your question. There is one fast revenue generation, and that is a proposition two and a half override. That's it. I'm not advocating for that. It's clear that is not the appetite of the town at this time. It is just, it is the answer to your question.
So no one's, no one's like proposing it yet?
We are not proposing that.
No, I know, I was just wondering if it was not.
Well, there are people in the community proposing that, yes. That, I would not say, I mean, you're not advocating.
We are not.
No, I understand. I was just wondering if there was, it just sounded like every committee was having a cut discussion. I was just wondering if there was any formal proposal.
Honestly, as a resident, you would, you would know that or could know that more than we would at the school level.
I think right now as a community, we're, we're trying to figure out other ways to grow the revenue, but those are much longer-term solutions. Those won't happen next year or probably the year after. I mean, we have to be.
Sounds like we're cutting longer-term things.
We are, we are cutting, yeah, yeah. We're cutting things that are going to affect our kids now and not just next year, but the following year and the following year and the following year.
I just wanted to say, like, a comment. I have a, I have a current third grader, but I have an incoming kindergarten here in the 1920s, and that information about the science and then the way you justified that you had to kind of say it as an offhand, a found it that social studies is.
Common.
We're not even gonna talk about that, because it's, just that science is already like, if current K-3 are not getting, or K-5 aren't getting the material, then that just as a resident really is disturbing with an incoming.
It's also disturbing to potential residents.
Right.
So as a resident, I'll say that you're asking all the right questions, and it's important that we are vocal advocates of what we want in the future of our children. You know, I have a four, six, and eight-year-old, but I'm concerned about it in longevity beyond then because it's those young people that are going to be, that are younger, not born yet, that we're, we want this town to groom and grow to be prosperous, productive, prosperous society. So we want everyone, you know, demographic society, we kind of want everyone to look at this and take a really good look and talk and be vocal and be advocates within the community. So thank you for speaking up.
Yeah, Miss Hughes. Jamie, do you want to introduce yourself?
So, sure. I'm Jamie Stevens, and I recently joined the finance committee. And I actually felt a seat of someone who recently retired, so I will be on the ballot.
He is doing an outstanding now.
More importantly, it was, look, I've lived in this town for 10 years since junior, and sadly, I'm just now getting behind the curtains and seeing all of these people that have worked very hard for many years, and it was me just getting off my rear end and getting involved to, you know, be, be part of, be part of this bigger, you know, and again, just as a, as a citizen of the town of Easton, getting out and being a little more vocal and an advocate too. And learning, I gotta admit, I'm still learning a lot. So I'm here, I'm listening, I'm learning, and I think that's one of the biggest takeaways for me is to continue to figure out how we become a better town and a better city.
Your participation and your questions are invaluable because this is the largest audience we've had for the budget presentation, and I've done it at least 10 times. I don't think most people are aware of what we're talking about.
That's kind of, that's what I was asking about, the information of the citations, because I almost wanted to just like put it on the board for its own reason.
And the budget, the budget presentation and the budget is online as well, so share it.
And this one, of course, will be as well. The most updated one will be online as well in just probably a couple of days. I do want to point out, when you asked about quicker fixes than projects in town that our town officials are working very, very hard on, I didn't mention it because it was in the, in the budget presentation, but it was rather long, so I will repeat it in case you may have forgotten it at this point. The facilities needs we have now, again, are all temporary. If we don't get the new building, which I don't have a huge level of confidence is, is the case right now, the audiences have not been bigger than this either in the, in the dozens of presentations that we've done on the topic. Those are going to be, those are going to blow up, and those will suck all the money from our educational programming. Anything that we replace on a large scale triggers our compliance with codes. So if you spend 30% of the value on building, which is why we needed a new boiler at Moreau Hall and a new roof, and we only did the roof because we were going to trigger the compliance issues, which means the ADA seismic and fire suppression. We don't want to avoid those. We want our handicapped friends to be able to utilize our buildings. We want to have appropriate fire suppression systems. But we will incur those costs if we do anything like a boiler in some of our schools. Center School, for example, is limping by right now. In fact, right now, we are very, very lucky. It's the time of year that it is. Because we piggyback two old boilers. One of them is hurt and one of them is dead. I would be very worried if we were in January right now. So that is an example of something that we have to figure out how to do that between now and next year. If we do the, what is right now estimated to be at least $20,000 repairs on the remaining boiler, the reason we piggyback them is because of the age, and we can't lose the whole thing. We can't fix the one that's dead. So we could perhaps, we run that into the ground. Now, we could maybe do that for a year or two. We can't do that forever. And that room that the boilers are in is, every pipe is insulated with asbestos. So if you, if you replace the boiler, you have to replace all the pipes, which would be an extensive remediation, and we would have to close the school if that happened mid-winter. We do not have children in the building when we do small patches. I have no idea how long that would take, but it would be expensive. That's one example, one. If we do get the new building, not only do we not have those costs, but we are predicting, and our Perkins Eastman has already done projections on the operating savings of now not seeping out all of our heat and actually having seals on our windows and having more efficient heating systems, for example. So in addition to not falling off that fiscal cliff, we could see some savings in operations. So I can't overemphasize the importance of that project on this budget if you're talking about something that's coming soon. And when I say soon, the vote on that will be in November. In September, we will have the exact specifications of the building, the cost, and the tax impact. It is important to note that the debt on Richardson Olmsted has just, is just ending right now. While I don't know if that's exactly what the debt is going to be for the elementary school, because we don't have that specification yet, we will be able to tell people that as well before they vote. We should have, we're expected to have that information in September. The vote is in November.
And I, I'm just going to make it clear. By vote, it's a community vote. It's not this board voting, it's not the Board of Selectmen voting. The community needs to come out and vote en masse to support this. Caroline and I actually just recently looked at the numbers when we have those kinds of elections, and it's a little scary.
So just saying one of the frightening things from last night's combined meeting was when Dave Fields spoke about, so this is our head of the DPW, and they've essentially just, they don't even look at the elementary schools anymore. They're gone. So they've kind of admitted, but there's nothing else we can do, and so other than help the schools and belong. I have two children in Center School, and I'll tout it because it is absolutely, it's an amazing school because of the professionals, the staff that we have. And in this town, we are really spoiled by these people that are willing to work so hard with what we give them to work with. The children certainly come first, and I would, I'll be sending another one to Center School next year, and I would do it again over and over and over in that old nasty asbestos-ridden building because of the professionals that are in there working alongside my children every day.
Could, could I just make a comment, though, that you just reminded me? Your explanation of the wage adjustment factor, which is essentially about labor markets and about the average salary. So if the average salary in Easton is $45,000 and in Mansfield it's higher, what it means is that Easton is put in what's called a labor market area. So they assume we need less money to, for example, pay our teachers. That is not the case because our teachers make probably at about the 50th percentile, even though we're in the bottom 10% in per pupil, per pupil expenditure. The money we have available in our system is in the bottom 10% compared to other communities in the state. But our teachers, we can't pay teachers in the bottom 10%, or we won't attract the wonderful professionals that you're talked about. We won't motivate people to work as hard as our teachers work. So, you know, the one thing we must do is offer a fair wage to our teachers and support them in any way we can because obviously they're the ones who educate our children. And so I don't think most people would say, well, why don't you spend less on your teachers and then you could, you know, get some of these other resources in place? So that's kind of the conundrum that we, that we face because, believe me, our, the average salary for our teachers can't be that, in that low-wage labor market area, or we would never attract good teachers.
Lauren, is there a question?
Well, I, I was more of a comment, and I know we're running late, but it was eight years ago and then six years ago. I mean, every year, we've been treading water and we've been trying to deal with these escalating special ed costs to keep kids in district, right? Because once they're out of district, it costs more and more and more, and the cost of putting a child out of district, one child residential is more than a teacher. So we've been training water, trying to build these programs, and now we're just taking these huge steps backwards where it hasn't got support. And I just feel like this is the beginning of this burgeoning disaster unless we somehow figure out how to fix it now. These costs are going to exponentially get, because you're going to have more and more kids needing more services. Am I right in what you're saying? And I imagine too, that new schools by having quiet, private, appropriate, larger spaces will also help with behavioral and emotional needs for these kids too, being able to use the spaces effectively. I think that would help also.
Any other questions? Does she have something?
Yeah, this, and this might be more for Jamie or Cryer, anybody who is caught up on the town side of the budget. I know that the, I believe the Board of Selectmen adopted some guidelines around funding the stabilization fund every year. Has that been reduced this year? Is that, are we, are we looking at reducing the allocation to the stabilization fund to make up some of that?
No. We have, we, 50% of the free cash goes into stabilization, and we want, we want to be in a situation where, God forbid, when we have another session, that we have some fallback ability, not, not to lay off, to expire teachers, et cetera.
Yeah, understood. But we have made a strategic decision in recent years to, that, you know, the town couldn't afford to meet that goal. What's the, do you know what that amount is that's going, that's proposed to go into stabilization fund in this year's budget?
For 2020? No. We won't know that until free cash is, is known in the fall.
Any other questions? Comments? Suggestions?
I will say that I, I am not a resident of Easton, regretfully. I share readily that my husband has a residency requirement for his job, otherwise we would be here, but I became very aware that there was a burgeoning structural deficit in this town at my very first town meeting. David Colton, who's the town administrator, showed a slide that I have seen every year since then, and you likely will see it on May 20th from Connor Reed, which explained that the last override happened, talk about the most gratuitous town in the Commonwealth, right before the recession of 2008-9. And so while the rest of us in other districts at the time were losing 10, 15, or 20% of our teaching staff, Easton was able to remain level, and the money was taken from the stabilization fund to meet the needs every year. So I have often spoken to staff who have been here a very long time, who say things like, well, the town's always found the money. They're accurate about that because they used to take it from the stabilization fund. But it was made very clear to me at the first town meeting I attended that that was fast dwindling, and it would not last. And it was speculated that it would be within the next five to 10 years, and it's right on projection. And the town got to a point where that stabilization fund was so dangerously low, it affects other bond ratings and so forth, that they made the guideline to put 50% into it. And so we knew we weren't going to be receiving money from the stabilization fund, and we know we aren't going to be receiving it. But when people have a recollection that money was quote-unquote "found," they are correct, but that is definitively gone at this point.
Anything else from the committee? Okay, so we will just, I guess, wait until we get a little more definitive answers from Mr. Reed and kind of go from there. I'd like to invite you all to our school committee meeting tomorrow, in case you haven't had enough of us.
3:00 P.M.
Okay, so next item on the agenda, public comments. So any other comments that had nothing to do with what we've already talked about? Okay. Superintendent's notes.
No, thank you.
Superintendent's notes.
We had our first, I just want to alert the committee that we had our first round of computer-based ELAMCAS testing at Oliver Ames this past week, and unfortunately, there were some issues on the first day. Secondary backup failed, causing the Chromebooks to search for the backup system, bypassing the initial backup feature. This was an issue that we actually found to be out of our control, thankfully. I, I hate to say that, but I'm thankful that it wasn't within our control. John Sous had determined that it was a secondary backup system and shut down, he shut the system down immediately, which mitigated the issue for the remainder of session one. And it did affect the testing, as there were some students that lost their essays that they had written. Fortunately, the students that this affected were able to recreate their essays, and we had no issues completing session one for all students. And I really want to commend the high school staff, especially Mr. Paul and all of the staff there. Yep, the proctors, Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Flanagan, in his, his willingness to adapt to anything, as always, and also just the, the rest of the staff that were there to emotionally support our students. It was a very trying time, and again, another example of where students are always put first, and our, our staff was, was actually, not actually, was impeccable.
How many kids were affected?
About 20 to 25 students. I'm still waiting to get that exact list. We were able to connect with the state and with Measure Progress to ensure that we could use the computer-based testing for Session 2. We, we did do that the next day, which was yesterday, and there were no major issues. Minor issues that are typical, you know, student actually didn't realize he was supposed to check multiple answers, you know, things like that, but other than that, it was fine.
So was it a problem with our technology or the state's?
So it was a, it was an issue with a backup system, so it wasn't...
In our district?
No.
In the state?
It's not the state either. It's the one that we chose.
From the cloud.
It's like, it's a cloud. And there were a few other districts that encountered this issue on Day 2. On Day 1, it was just us, so we thought that it was something that we had done. But then Day 2, in contacting and trying to understand what the issue was, working with a tech person from Measure Progress, we did, we started receiving emails from other districts that were experiencing the same thing. In fact, DASSI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, went to one of those districts and saw it happening in the moment, and they had the same configuration that we did. So we are awaiting what, what the next steps are, as we are, you know, anticipating that this, we need to find a resolution for the uninterrupted testing for our students, and what this means for their results.
And I will also say, of course, I echo exactly what Chrissy said about the professionals in the building and the students themselves, as you can imagine. This is a competency determination. It determines whether they get in, whether they graduate from high school and receive a diploma, but it's also whether they get the Abigail Adams Scholarship, which allows them to go to a state school, tuition-free. This, they call it high stakes tests for a reason. So I, I'm very impressed by everyone who handled the situation as well as they did. I do need to note one person that Chrissy forgot, which is herself, because I'm sure people are familiar with the Mama Bear Syndrome. I've seen the MCAS Mama Bear Syndrome, and it's a little bit scary. She was calling the state and measured progress, and was on them for, for days, but hours and hours into the evening, working with them, she was over at the high school for the whole thing, assisting, and she got results. So, understand that you're dealing with.
Thank you for sharing. It wasn't, I, really, it was, it was everybody, it was a team effort.
It was def, it was definitely a team effort.
So that's, that's the bad news. Then there's good news. So the good news is that the Easton Public Schools partnered with the Easton Old Colony Y, and we, to run a food drive for the Easton Food Pantry, and we, as a district, donated over 30 large boxes filled with food for the Easton Food Pantry. All the schools participated. It was a great, great event, and it was, just, so I just want to thank again our partnership with the Old Colony Y. I know we keep saying this, but it really is a wonderful partnership, and they, it was a great, great turnout. We had a meeting with the STEAM team this past week, and we are set for our annual STEAM night for the students in grades K-2, and it will be held on Friday, May 31st. It is a little bit later this year than in the past. We have the Toe Jam Band booked.
Toe Dan, Toe Jam Puppet Band.
Puppet Band, thank you. And we have various, various community members that will be hosting tables focused on science, technology, engineering, arts, and math for children to do. We'll be advertising more, advertising the night more when we get closer. So save the date, May 31st. And I just want to also share, lastly, that this past Friday, our parent professionals and office staff were trained on our safety and security procedures. Another example of the wonderful collaboration between the departments in town. This was the first time that the Easton Police and Easton Fire took the training over from Synergy, which was the contracted, the contracted vendor that we used, and they did a wonderful, wonderful job. We can't thank them enough. And our par, our teachers went through this training back in November, and our parent professionals in office, office personnel were able to go through that this past Friday, and it was, it was a great training. They look out for our, so, and, no, I'm kidding.
School committee notes?
Nope.
Nope? Okay. I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor? Thank you, tonight. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much for staying and...
Thanks for staying.